Okay, looks like we're on. So I'll call this meeting, Board of Selectmen, June 16th, 2015, to order. First item on the agenda is approval of minute meetings, meeting minutes, from April 29th, May 4th, May 5th, May 14th, and May 19th.
I move that we approve the following meeting minutes as written, April 29th, 2015, May 4th, May 5th, May 14th, and May 19th, 2015.
And I'll second that.
Motion's been made to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order because the public hearing isn't posted until 7:30, so we'll try and move that around so that it's around 7:30 when we start the public hearing on the sign.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you want to do citizens speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, skipped right over that. Item five is citizens speak, we'll certainly do citizens speaking.
Hi.
Just state your name for the record.
Julie Kennedy, I live on Assaton Street in Milton, Mass. And I wanted to say thank you for that letter, I thought it was so well-written, to the FAA opposing, and I strongly oppose, the two ANEBS, because that would give us five, of course. And in my part of town, on Assaton Street, this will be two more. We have 27s in the 33L, which you know, you've heard me talk about so much, but this winter was horrible, we had 27 and 33, day and night. So, I know that 4R is the runway of choice, and it's overused in Milton, and they need to be more creative, instead of putting more planes over Milton in the 4L. They need to use 15R, they need to use runway nine, but they don't, because it is the runway of choice, and then you wouldn't have to have more planes over Milton. So, that part of the letter, I was really happy about the cumulative effect over Milton, we have the most ANEBS of any town, and I've done my research, in the state of Massachusetts. So we should be respected. There was a letter sent out by you in February of 2014, which was a wonderful letter, very strong, but this is what they've done again to us, so they keep coming back and doing more and more. During the summer, between March and the end of September, they tested over my neighborhood, constantly, constantly, the 4R, and this is what they're going to be doing, and they're, some of them are below 3,000 feet, and many of the parents were concerned, because the prop planes have lead fuel, and as an educator, I know the devastating effect of lead poisoning on children's minds. And if these planes are below 3,000 feet, that is falling down to the ground. So, I'm just saying, that was, that testing period was terrible, I just appreciate your letter, and I'll tell you, many of people have told me they'd never fly JetBlue, because there are too many of them flying over and not caring, and not taking responsibility for people on the ground. So I thank you again for that letter, and I would suggest, the letter in February was copied to all the public officials, I would do the same thing, you know, all to Capuano and Lynch, because it was such a well-written letter, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who has citizens speak? Nobody? Okay. So we're gonna skip over items six and seven for right now, and get item eight, which is the quarterly, well, it's actually just the Traffic Commission update, from Chief Wells. I'll get you out of here early, you've had a tough day.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
We just had another Traffic Commission meeting downstairs.
I heard it.
So, as you know, we look at traffic townwide, and we deal with issues as they come before us. The recommendations that we voted here tonight are relative to an issue in East Milton Square, we're trying to adjust, as well as, we're going to recommend to you, I don't think you're gonna have to vote it tonight, but we're gonna submit it to you, we've already voted it, once we have the language for a loading zone to be installed in the Morton Road area, just a couple of things that have to be done, but that will be for Central Avenue, but we've already done all the stuff, we just have to, yes, yes, so we took that vote, we did take that vote. So, I do have some amendments to the traffic rules and orders tonight, for Antwerp Street, for Martin Terrace, those are the only two, and then I have a couple of discussion items that I'll just touch base on, as far as ongoing other things. The first is on Antwerp Street, and one of the things that we see now, and this really comes with, we've stepped up a lot of enforcement this spring, as you know, we have mountain bike officers sign there quite a bit, but we do see abuse constantly on Antwerp Street. And it was not, some houses had no parking, some houses had parking, some houses, it just wasn't, so we looked at it, what we've done is, we've voted and recommending to you that you install no parking signs on the even-numbered side of our Antwerp Street, between Granite Ave and Wood, and that you install no parking signs on the odd-numbered side of Antwerp Street, between Granite Ave and Dependable Cleaners, those two. Those are the two recommendations, and we also recommend that you install 30-minute parking signs on the old, on the odd-numbered sides of Antwerp Street, between Dependable Cleaners to answer, which is currently one-hour parking, and it just, it just can't have it, you've got the driveway in and out of the parking lot, so we've regimented the whole street the same way.
So essentially what this will do, then, is make no parking either side around the Dependable Cleaner, and where the entrance central center is.
Correct, which has parking now on both sides, how it got in there, I don't know, but it's going, it's, that's coming out. And then we've regulated the rest of the street up to Wood Street. And then on Martin Terrace, which is that small little dead end that goes to the back of the two commercial properties, that are on Edge Hill, that come right up the Empire Building, I think it's called, and there's like three or four homes in there, that kind of get inundated between the post office, they can't even get up and down their streets, so we've regulated that whole street. There were actually spaces, from a prior vote, that you approved probably three years ago, there were spaces that look like they're private parking spaces, the very back of that, that we regulated, they're actually town property, the town owns them, but that part's already been done, this just does the rest of the street. So those are the two voting, voting recommendations that we have for tonight.
One quick question, a while ago, we tried to encourage the post, post office workers to use service-owned parking, is that working at all?
The post office is my biggest headache in the square, it's just our biggest, because they come en masse in the morning, you know, they do that, and then they leave, and they try to park, so they're getting tagged as well, and it's, it's not gonna go away, it has, we have to deal with this, and we'll continue to do that, although, as you do know, we are, probably by the fall, we're gonna have a plan for you, whether or not you wanna vote on it, how you wanna decide whether or not we take some of the property in the back of the M.A.C., Milton outside of now, convert that to parking. I think anything that you can do to build more parking spaces in the square is only gonna help both the residents around that post office, and, because as you know, the, in answer to your question, the employees just make it tougher for the users.
Right.
So the users can't get there, the employees are there, so anything we can do to alleviate it is going to be amenable, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are forcing them, anyone that we find out, any employee that doesn't have it, we are forcing them to have service own, so if we catch you, and your employee, and you park, you're gonna get tagged, you have to use, and the other thing that is, and, both just heard it downstairs, in 2016, it's gonna be two zones for service-owned parking, Central Ave, Milton, Milton Village will be one district, East Milton be another district, because it is now, yes, you can use either one, and there's abuse, that we didn't, it's just, you can abuse it, so we're gonna take that away. So that'll be for six, that'll be ready to go in 16, we'll just flip the colors each year, and that'll work. The only thing I wanna say about the square, we've had, is you know, this is something that's big on our radar, we have a proposed project, I don't know when it's gonna happen, but at least it's the signalization, the lighting, the parking, it's really desperately needed. We did discuss at this meeting that we need the DPD to go and do the sidewalk, the crosswalks over, and I think they were holding off because they thought the construction was gonna stop, that hasn't, they have to do it.
Right.
We added pedestrian, those little pedestrian signs, at three locations in East Milton, the post office being most important, Boulevard and Bryant, and in front of Thomas Fun Home, as always, all on Central Avenue last week, just as one more added protection for people using them. We've had several meetings with Mike Zulis and his committee, he has a school transportation, public safety committee, and one of the things we're looking at is all of the schools, but the one we're doing right now is calling cut, cutting, and so I was walking in safer routes. As you know, and you're going to learn very quick, traffic, and it's just something we have to deal with every day here. So, I hope the square project starts soon, we need the infrastructure to be approved there, I just, but we're just trying to make these little improvements right now, just to make it safer.
Okay, great. They also had a couple of discussion items.
Yeah, so I'm gonna talk about, so there's, we also, we had a request from Brandon Road, and we've been looking, if you recall, we came back, we came to a meeting here about six months ago with the town engineer, Mr. Lynch, Beta Group is looking at a major construction improvement to the Blue Hills Parkway, 138 Truman Highway intersection.
Right.
Part of our concern there from the Traffic Commission, the same as the East Milton Square, the positive effect that might have on cut-through traffic for the East Milton neighborhood, particularly on the east side of Adams Street, the same is applicable to the Elliot Street neighborhoods and the streets between Blue Hills Parkway and St. Mary of the Hills. So, based on the information that we know this project's gonna go forward, we just, we didn't find speed to be an issue in any of these streets, volume is, can be a concern, so we wanna hold off and see what the benefit is, that's a fast-track project, it's gonna happen very quickly, so, those are the only, the other things. The other thing I do wanna talk about, and you know from the Central Ave meeting, that we've had a lot of discussion about this crosswalk at Maple, and this was news to both you and I, it happened in, but as you saw from the meeting we had with the Central Ave residents, the warrant to place such stop signs, crosswalks, all those things are so difficult today that it wasn't 25 years ago, and that's why the recommendation was made to kind of take that out. But we are looking at it, looking at the walk, you know, the safest way that the kids walk to school, from the Glover side, going to Glover School, that area there, from the Elliot Street side, so we'll continue to look at all of those things, and the only other thing that I really wanna talk about, at the bottom two, is that there was a request for us to look at the town landing, something on there, the part of it that they asked us something, not a public way, that we don't have jurisdiction of, number one. And the final thing is that, if you see, as you know, there was proposal to Anne Marie to change the traffic plan here, even though that's not a public way, we support it, and we would suggest to you that you have Mr. Ritchie move forward with that, with the fire chief to put that place.
Right.
And I think that also will have a benefit to cut-through in this neighborhood right here, so.
Yes, absolutely.
The only other piece that's not on here that we are looking at, is that we're looking at the PS next year to completely revamp their parking, pickup drop-off situation for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and have it ready by the time school opens.
Okay.
Okay.
That will help that Central Ave.
That will help the same thing, because a lot of the thing is, they're all forced into the main parking lot right now, it's first come, first served, and then they come out, and you're trying, it's, it's a mess, so we wanna split it up into a sixth, a seventh, and an eighth grade, with sixth being the closest to the school, seventh take, utilize the length of the old Milton High School lot, which is not utilized, develop a curb cut, utilize that as a pickup drop-off, and then even if we have to use Kelly as well. And we may have to add a crossing up, we wanna have this all in place by September, ready to go, so. That was actually the easiest school fix. So that's, that's pretty much it right now, we did have a meeting tonight, and I know Katie will respond down, we'll talk about, I'll let her speak about it a little bit, we had an at-length meeting with one of the residents downstairs tonight on, as you know, and we've talked about, Central Ave is changing, Business District is changing, the pressures there today are different than they were 10, 15, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, we had huge daytime pressure from Fallon, that daytime pressure was now nighttime pressure from St. Elroy. But depending on what goes to 131, that could change it and make it even greater, so we're looking at a big picture for you.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve the following amendments to the traffic rules and orders. Article five, section one, Antwerp Street, install no parking signs on even-numbered side of Antwerp Street between Granite Ave and Wood Street, install no parking signs on the odd-numbered side of Antwerp Street between Granite Ave and Dependable Cleaners. Article five, section seven, on Antwerp Street, install 30-minute parking signs on the odd-numbered side of Antwerp Street from Dependable Cleaners to the intersection of Wood Street, and Martin Terrace, install no parking 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, signs on Martin Terrace on the even-numbered side of the street.
Okay, motion been made to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you, and I do wanna say, as you know, I was updating you on this case, the case of the missing gentleman all weekend, and sadly, it was a bad outcome, but I do wanna say, I cannot, as I wrote to you today, I can't articulate in words what an effort they put out on behalf of this man's family to find him, and as a community as a whole, we should be all very proud of ourselves, everyone today who came out in the past five days to try and do something, whether it was to spread something, put up signs, to say sadly, it was a tragic outcome, but it was a tremendous sentence and a tremendous show of humanity on behalf of so many people, so I thank you for all your feedback.
As you said, at least to give the family closure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Take it number nine. Police cadet.
Police cadet.
Oh, right.
It's been a long week. I missed call this morning, too, I come from.
Okay, item number nine is approval of police cadet appointment.
I'll move that we approve the recommendation of police cadet appointment for all residents to the police cadet program, Joseph D. Marinelli of 154 Cabot Street, contingent on approval from the personnel board.
Second.
Motion made seconded, the only comment I wanna make after reading it, he seems like a very great, he's like a great kid, a great background check and everything else.
Started as a summer seasonal kid, he's had this interest, he was coming in to find out when the cadet test, it's kind of similar to how Travis was when, and he took the test good, very well, I think he probably would've started the day after the test, but I understand his family was paying to put him through college, and we learned that, like, from a parent's point of view, getting through college is, becomes the priority, so, we could've hired him a while ago, but we've put this off now until we finish the school year, so I think he'd be a great addition, a great kid, so, thank you very much again for that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Are we done?
Yes.
I think we're done now. Let's see, so we still a couple of minutes, do you wanna do the 4L comment letter, or do we wanna go to the public hearing? Or jump down to something?
Comment letter's gonna take more than seven or eight minutes, I think.
It is, yeah, so we could do item 10, the seasonal appointments.
Yes.
So, yeah, let's, let's take item 10.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to hire the following, Benjamin Donahue, 117 East Yale Road, Anthony Rota, 326 Thatcher Street, Brendan Flaherty of 30 Martin Road, James Crowley, 35 Woodville Avenue, as temporary seasonal employees, contingent on approval from the personnel board.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Are we done?
Yes.
I think we're done now.
Good night, Chief.
Let's see, so we still a couple of minutes, do you wanna do the 4L comment letter, or do we wanna go to the public hearing? Or jump down to something?
Comment letter's gonna take more than seven or eight minutes, I think.
It is, yeah, so we could do item 10, the seasonal appointments.
Yes.
So, yeah, let's, let's take item 10.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to hire the following, Benjamin Donahue, 117 East Yale Road, Anthony Rota, 326 Thatcher Street, Brendan Flaherty of 30 Martin Road, James Crowley, 35 Woodville Avenue, as temporary seasonal employees, contingent on approval from the personnel board.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, they'll be starting June 29th, assuming all the paperwork's in place.
Okay, all right, we got a few more, Joe, we got, let's see, designate space for water main surplus soil storage?
Sure, I think the information's contained in your packet, if you've had a chance to review it.
We got some technical difficulties here.
Sure.
Oh, is it turned off?
Now we're back in business.
You sounded much better.
I was, I was gonna sing a song.
After all, hopefully I had a chance to review the information in the packet, the reality is, we have a water main construction project under construction, and in, out of all the 14,000 linear feet of work that we're doing, there are two areas along Canton Avenue that have soils that need to be dealt with in accordance with the Massachusetts contingency plan, which means there, there's oil in the soil and needs to be handled, only because we're excavating the street, you know, it's fine to be in the street, but once you handle it by excavation, you have to deal with it and test it and dispose of it properly. And under that contingency plan, the soil must be stored, awaiting the analytical results on the land owned by the town, owned by the same owner, so in this instance, it's the town. So if you are familiar with the, the old landfill, if you go up the access road, and many of you are familiar with it, and maybe, maybe even, even David's become familiar with it, but as you go up to the access road, the access road bends around to the right along the toe of what was the landfill and where the golf course is, if you would proceed straight, you would be hugging, everything to the right is the lease line of Quarry Hills, and everything to the left is still the town-owned land, and in fact, that was a sub, that parcel of land was a subject of a town meeting vote for other municipal purposes. So that parcel of land is what's been designated for years, as the hurricane lot.
Right.
And it's intended to be used as a, as a lot for the storage of slash and blowdown and whatnot, in the case of tornadoes and hurricanes and whatnot, for temporary storage materials for processing to be hauled off-site. So, it's land of the town, it's flat, it's accessible, it's away from people, it's, is in fact our, our land, it's, it's a great place to store this material, it's, by the contingency plan, it requires work be overseen by a licensed site professional, LSP, if you will, they work on behalf of the town, it also is confined by regulation to be stored in containers and, you know, lined with plastic, and covered with plastic, and until such time the results come back, and depending on what concentrations you're seeing in the soil, it tells you where it has to go and how it has to be ultimately disposed of. Two localized areas, one in the 940 block of Canton Avenue, very small localized area, the other up in the 1400 block of Canton Avenue, much further down in rural, the, the 940 block is almost completely, surely attributed to activity of in a butter, without naming names or naming its function, we all know the general area just south of the Parkway. So, and the fact that the material migrated beneath the road is fine, too, I mean, it, those types of things happen. The other one further down, there is no apparent release, other than what's probably a residential oil tank that had some, get, something get into the ground, but we did in fact do borings in these locations, and we did find trace elements up there as well.
Okay.
So we'll look at something on the order of 200 cubic yards total, based on the cross-section of borings that we did, and that being the case, we suspect the analysis, you know, excavation, storage analysis, sent out results back, probably be up there four to six weeks, and neither of these two sites, we've worked simultaneously, so theoretically, you work the first site, it'll be up there for a short period of time, it gets, it goes out, and then, and then later on in the project, the other, the stuff comes in and for the same sort of process, so.
It's all containerized anyway.
It's all containerized, it, it comes in in the, in the containers, and it goes out in the same containers, just its ultimate destination's driven by the analysis. There's no risk of release, in fact, by regulation, it's prohibited to have any further release from these containers. This work will be happening sometime in very late July, August, thereabouts, so it, you know, access in the wintertime with snow and whatnot isn't, isn't an issue at all. So, the area we're talking about is, is coming up the access road, if anybody is familiar with where the temporary clubhouse was, was trailers, if you go up there now, the only remnant of that is this fire hydrant in that same vicinity, it's up in that flat area there. Yes, it's near Quarry Hills, it's not near their greens, it's not near their tees, you know, they might complain that, you know, it's, you know, an obnoxious use, but it isn't, it's, you know, it's not, I don't, very cautious to not consider it like the wind turbine or anything like that at all, and it is in fact on our land. So, you know, we're very cognizant to that fact, and, so what I'm asking for is, this is land of the town, it's not public works land, you know, it's land of the town, I don't have the authority to just simply shift like I would in other places in town, this, this material there. We looked at the possibility of storing these containers roadside, but, you know, that's just unsafe on that high-speed road, and, you know, lateral impacts with, with accidents and whatnot.
Right.
So it makes sense that we use this, and I'm asking permission of the Board of Selectmen who is care and custody this land is under, for us to be able to do that. It is the town's obligation to provide that site to the contractor, a site to the contractor.
I'll move that we authorize the Department of Public Works to utilize land adjacent to the landfill access road to temporarily store surplus regulated material, it will be displaced during their main water, their water main replacement project, until such time it can be permanently removed and properly disposed of, and to authorize the town's licensed site professional to control the activity of the site.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We're just about at 7:30, so I wanna switch back, could I just ask you one quick question, Joe, 'cause I got a call from a resident in the Hillside area, that happens on a business up in that area, so we can guess who it is. When is the construction project moving off of Hillside and onto Harlan, is that gonna be?
We actually worked there today to coordinate with them, because they have some big event planned.
Yes.
So we actually worked on that intersection today, to try to get up beyond their site, to be out of their way.
Okay, but are we gonna be permanently off of Hillside?
We're gonna be permanently off of Hillside with the water main as early as this Friday, we doing the water service transfers onto that main along Hillside, you know, for probably another week or a week and a half, and then be on Forest Street, you know, full blast, you know, thereafter, but like I said, we were trying to get out of that intersection today, to be able to accommodate that, that use.
Yeah, I guess that was.
Did they call today, or was that?
Yeah, just before the meeting, so just.
Follow-up on that, 'cause that should've been answered by.
Yeah, people are having trouble getting to, you know, even though it says it's open to, to local traffic, they'll get down as far as Harlan Street, and they can't get all the way down, so they get rerouted around, and.
The sign at Harlan says business access, and it actually has.
Yeah, but apparently they're getting, the customers would get rerouted around.
That's what might've happened with the police department, I know that right up until yesterday, they were able to get through, they're no problem.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Joe. Switch back to item number six, which is a public hearing on the Super Petroleum sign. So this is a request for Super Petroleum at 310 Granite Ave, is requesting a change, to change the business name on a lighted sign to Superior Petroleum, which currently reads Milton Gas, as well as two additional unlit panels advertising the market and auto care services they will offer. They're also requesting to change the banner color around the canopy over the pumps, as well as the color of the canopies on the building. And, yes.
Hi, my name is Mike Bogazian from Super Petroleum.
Mr. Chairman, can we invite the Chair of the Plating Board up to the table?
Yes, Emily, come up and join us. Oh, sorry, your, your name again was?
Mike Bogazian from Super Petroleum.
Hi, Mike, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Emily, so I'll just kinda open this up for first, first, well, Mike, why don't you make a statement as to what you plan to do, and then, then I guess we can ask some questions from there.
I might wanna do that.
Okay.
Sign Review Committee met twice with the owner of Super Petroleum, Mike was here with his lawyer, with his sign review, his sign company representative, they met twice in May, the Sign Review Committee came up with a decision, the decision was to change the blue stripe on the building to red with no writing, to change the blue stripe on the canopy to red, and the writing there would be on the north side, it would just say Super Petroleum, in large letters, it will say, "Super."
So the north side is towards Wood Street?
Facing, yes, facing Wood Street, so if you come up Granite Ave, you'd see it.
But no other lettering on any of the other sides?
No, not on the building or on the canopy. The awnings, the awnings over the windows will be all red, no writing, the awning over the door, for the shop, will be a blue one that'll say Auto Care, the awning over the store door will go from blue to red, and it has an SP symbol. The freestanding sign, all of those were not lit, the freestanding sign is what was there before that had Milton Gas and two blank pieces under it, the numbers for the price of the gasoline, and then there is a inspection sticker sign. The issue here is to change from Milton Gas to Super Petroleum, they're changing the two blanks from blanks to SP Mart and Auto Care, both of those are aluminum. Both of those are aluminum panels with die-cut letters, and neither of those is lit. It's an opaque aluminum panel with vinyl letters.
And that would just be lit from the ground, or not lit at all? Just whatever lights are on?
The top panel will say Super Petroleum, in big letters it'll say Super, and I think you have the images in front of you. The Super Petroleum, it's an opaque aluminum panel with routed push-through letters with opaque vinyl letters. The light will be coming from behind the letters out around the lettering, only the edges of the letters get lit. The price numbers, the price numbers are probably the most offending piece of that sign. The sign review committee wants the numbers, to have the brightness of the numbers turned down.
At night?
They've come up with two solutions for that, two things to be worked on, and those solutions would be, one, add a rheostat that will actually allow the numbers to be turned down at night. The second option, should that not work, would be to add a piece of smoked glass over the numbers on the north side, so that the houses on Granite Ave, as you look, as you look back towards the business district, it would diminish the brightness of those lights. The whole idea is to dim the lights as the houses, as the houses look at those lights. I did talk to Mike as latest this afternoon, and the sign company was supposed to have somebody there-
It's been done.
-tonight, putting in a rheostat to see how it works. So after leaving here, we'll go find out how much it's turning.
Yeah, it has been done, it has been done.
Okay.
And we're going to go look at it.
Good, good, okay.
And what hours will it be dimmed? Can you clarify that?
It automatically reflect to the sunlight.
So as the sun goes down?
As the sun goes down, the lights get turned down. The lights are, when the sun is up, the lights are really bright, so you can see through it. And then you?
We find, he called me, he did it, so.
All right.
He spent time with the factory, he was able to program it spinning, and we put it even in, we put it in dimmer setting than the factory recommended, just to play it safe.
And have you seen it?
No, it's not dark enough, when I go back, I see it.
So in terms of the top two panels of the sign, before, those were backlit, or not? They're not, they're not backlit, well, the letters are backlit.
The original sign that was up there that was Milton Gas had the letters Milton Gas. They've since taken off the panels that are underneath. Right, it's an opaque panel that had lit letters.
Okay.
That sign has since been, they put a temporary sign over it, the light is actually so bright, if you drive by it now, you see Milton Gas, you don't see Super Petroleum. If you drive by during the day, you know, if somebody told you I could see through it, no you can't. It's, I don't know how they do that, but it's not thick enough vinyl to block it out. With the new proposed sign, it's an aluminum panel, so yes, it's lit from inside, just out around the letters. It's not lighting the letter, it's lighting around the letter.
Okay, okay.
And it's not lighting the red background?
No.
Just on the edges.
Right.
The edges of the letter.
Because the red part is aluminum.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the light can't get through it.
Opaque aluminum panel.
Okay. All right, any questions from anybody else, before I open it up to Emily?
On this, these bands here, will there be letters there, or is that going to be?
Actually, I'm taking the blue one out, and actually I changed my mind, it's going to be off-white vinyl.
Off-white, but are there going to be any letters along there? Or it's just going to be a plain band?
Going to be nice vinyl, because I don't like, because aluminum tends to buckle, and so we're going to put like a siding of white vinyl, like a BVC or something going on.
Just so you can see, I'm asking about the auto repair and the diagnostics.
Now that's coming out.
It's all coming out.
Okay, so.
Okay.
I think the big issue for people is the lit sign.
Right.
And improvements to it, and, yeah.
No lettering, no lettering.
So just above that awning there, there's going to be the lighting.
That awning stays blue, that awning turns red.
Right.
That awning there turns red.
And that awning has an SP on it?
SP?
Yeah.
That says Auto Care.
And the red here, I changed my mind to make it look like, I made it vinyl off-white, so, because I, yeah, to make blend in, I don't need the side to jump, but the canopy does the job, so, you know, sure, nice.
And this is basically the same size sign that's been there since the 50s, or?
The same one. We have the original one that was up when Milton Gas first went in, the original top piece to that said Exxon Gas, Exxon, just said Exxon. It's just filled in, in the middle, pushed down.
But it's the same height, you're saying?
Yep.
Because they've lowered, they've added new signage below where the numbers there are?
Pushed the numbers down, so they're on top of the inspection sticker.
And is that inspection sticker the standard size for state?
That's a state law, you know, hopefully get it soon.
It's the same one we have at Blue Hill, Shell, the Milton Fuel, same one that's been there when it was Milton Gas.
Right.
So basically, all the gas signs in the square are about the same height, is that what you're saying?
You were speaking about the inspection, right?
No, we're talking the inspection.
The inspection, yeah, that's kind of the standard.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, just curious. In a second, I'll open it up in just one second. So any other questions from?
Yeah, one final question, on the door here, see how there's the signs there and there?
Yeah.
On the door itself, are those staying, or are those being removed?
They'll send the auto.
Is what?
I don't need that anymore, I don't need that, we have a sign here, I don't need it to-
All the windows have been cleaned.
Already cleaned that side, the whole side being cleaned already.
Thank you.
So Bill, is it fair to say that this new sign, the lit, I'm talking just about the lit sign, no, not the signs on the building, that this is an improvement over the old Milton Gas sign?
Yes.
It will have, it'll project less light?
Yes. That is, that is what will happen, I mean, if the rheostat doesn't work, we'll go back and make them put the smoked glass on, but in the meantime, we want to find out, does the rheostat work? We'll know very shortly.
So what happens, the smoked glass will be removed during the daytime, or just be always smoked glass?
Because it's so bright, it shines through.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So tonight, I'm going to go and look at it and see how this.
So am I.
Any other questions, before I open it up? Okay, I'll open it up to, does anybody, and if you do, it'd probably be easier if you came up, because otherwise you won't be heard. So kind of one at a time, anybody that wants to?
Name an address?
Yeah.
You go back, we'll see.
No, you might as well come over here.
Yeah, yeah. If he comes.
Hi, I'm Cindy Christensen from 59 Collmar Street, and I'm here tonight with Mike, I'll let him introduce himself too, but we're here representing the East Milton Neighborhood Association Executive Board, so do you want to?
I'm Mike Mahalchuk out of 55th Street, East Milton.
So our eight-member board is here to say that we would like for you to vote against this, the lit sign. We would like a seat at the table, working with the sign committee on coming up, and the owner, of course, coming up with a sign that we think fits not only the neighborhood, but also the goals of the master plan, which is to preserve the character of the neighborhood. So specifically, what we find just unattractive is the height of the sign, we realize that it's the current height of the sign, but there's a lot more lettering now on the three different red, white, and blue panels. The lighting should be more subdued, we think that there are towns similar to Milton that would not allow this type of sign, for example, Hingham, and we don't think that this sign preserves the Milton's character as the master plan states that we want to do. As I said, our East Milton Neighborhood Association is very willing to work with the town, the sign committee, and the owner to come up with something that we think does preserve the character of the town. I think this is an opportunity, I know that the old sign is, that this is fitting into the same space as the old sign, but it's an opportunity to make an improvement to a sign that possibly should not have been okayed back when it was first done. I also want to mention that, just on the chat, I don't think he's here, Andy Deamato is the chair of our DPW committee, we're such a new organization, we don't have it populated yet, but he wrote to say he was going to try to make it, but is not able to be here tonight. I wanted to let you know that he, as chair of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, has been meeting with business owners, the DPW, and residents to start a conversation going about ways to improve the looks of East Milton Square. He's got a lot of great ideas, and this process has been started. He said that he agrees with the conclusion of the executive board, the statements that I just made. He wanted us to note that the signs are in very close proximity to homes, the sign is large, and what he said loud, we had several comments similar to that, loud, gaudy, tacky, that kind of thing, and he felt like it was out of character with the feel of the community. He had some possible solutions, and as I said, I think, you know, we've got a very reasonable group of about 160-plus members now in our East Milton Association, and we're not against signs in our neighborhood, we're, we are, most of us are living there, understanding and even wanting to be close to the businesses, and we would just like a seat at the table. That brings me to my final comment, I also had a member write to me, I think that, my guess is we've had other times when we can comment on this lit sign, but it's really hard, you know, to know when that's possible for us to do that, and I think that this is another example of when communication in the town could be improved. We've got many, many young families in East Milton, and it's very difficult for them to show up at 7:30 on a school night and voice their concerns about a sign going up in their neighborhood. So what I'd like to read now is a comment from Cole and Carrie Kelly from Belcher Circle. She says, "A sign like this goes against preserving the character of the town, also even though the station is located on a main road, it's in a residential section of the road and will affect the neighbors on Wood Street as well. I feel bad for them. If I lived closer by and that sign went up, you would see a for-sale sign on my lawn for sure. This is how homes occupied by owners become undesirable, it's bad for the town." So once again, I wanted to express her thoughts here, but I also want to encourage you to come up with other ways that residents, particularly of the Neighborhood Association that we're here to represent, can make comments without having to find a babysitter or miss dinner with their family to make comments. Do you want to add anything?
Well, I want to say, stress that, like Cindy, we want to work with the owner on this, because I've been coming by East Milton, and my car was on E once, and I was very glad there was a gas station there, so. The entire group got together, there was an open meeting on June 3rd.
Yeah, I think so.
And we kind of kicked around the idea, we knew that there was some talk about, what should the signs look like in Milton, and what kind of a town do we want this to look like to, as you drive through, and the overwhelming sentiment in the room was that we wanted it to be classy. I just found out about this today, and I said, oh, I don't want to come into this meeting saying like, no, I don't like any sign, you know, I thought, maybe look around and see some beautiful signs on gas stations. So I went on Google Images for about an hour, and there actually is possible to make a historic landmark quality sign for a gas station, and, I don't know, I mean, that's what Cindy's saying, we want to work with the owner to make this like a gateway to, it's actually on the edge of an historic district, the Railway Village Historic District, which, you know, could be, let everybody driving down Granite Ave know that right a block away is some beautiful old homes. Thanks for giving us a chance, Tom.
Thank you.
I mean, just a couple of quick comments, in terms of, I mean, you know, it's a public hearing, so it can't be held on a weekend, you know, it has to be held during a public meeting, you know, it is a public hearing. So we put a notice in the paper, we put it out on Facebook, I mean, we did everything we could to publicize the fact that there was a hearing here tonight. I don't know what we could do, other than, obviously, anybody that wants to comment about anything can certainly email a selectman, can certainly, you know, can certainly call the town administrator, I mean, there are a bunch of ways that people can communicate with us, but in terms of, you know, holding this meeting at a different time, I don't think that's actually possible to do.
So you'll have to take our word for it, Tom, that we represent about 30 people in the room?
Oh, I understand, no, and I totally understand, totally understand, but just in terms of what Cindy had asked, I don't know that that's possible.
Yeah, I think sometimes it would be nice if this, maybe the selectman or the town administrator's office says, please send us your comments, rather than having people try to figure out, well, if I can't go to the meeting, how else can I make comments? Just an invitation to make comments would be appreciated, I think, particularly, like I say, it's just very difficult, we've even found this holding Neighborhood Association meetings, you know, when someone has to get, pay a babysitter to come to a meeting, it just really is, you know, it biases who you're hearing from, so a welcoming, you know, give us your comments, even if you can't come to the hearing, I think would be very much appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, can we see if there's anyone else from the public who wants to be heard, and then, because I've got some thoughts, but I'd rather hear from others first.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
In case there's others who want to talk, we've got quite a few people here, and I don't know if they're here for this or not.
How you doing?
How you doing?
How you doing?
Just take your name.
My name's Tim Driscoll, I live at 299 Granite Ave, which is directly across the street. I mean, I have a couple of concerns, one of them is maybe a little bit more technical as far as the adjustable lighting on there. First off, though, one of my concerns is the height of the sign, and the fact, you know, that's going to be backlit. I don't know if any of you guys are Seinfeld fans, but my concern is being Kramer when they put the Kenny Rogers roasters in across the street, and he had the red light shining in his bedroom, because that, the height of the sign is roughly at the height of my bedroom window directly across the street. So, whereas you're talking about only letters being lit, I would be interested to see what other solutions the owner has looked at, as far as like, have you looked at reflective signage as opposed to backlit? Someone was talking about the noise, if there is an audible noise, I mean, you can try other types of lighting, LED lighting, very easy to control the intensity of it, it can be done digitally, you don't need to use a rheostat, as a matter of fact, even with your solution now, I wouldn't use a rheostat, because rheostats are adjustable, I just don't want to leave it open to like, well, you know what, I don't really like the light intensity at night, I kind of want it to be a little bit brighter. Is the sign up top, is that also going to be on some sort of a digital sensor, like some sort of photovoltaic sensor that will turn it off at night? Is it going to be on a digital timer that shuts it off when the station is not operational? In general, the station's fairly well lit, even when it's not open. I've made the mistake of going in, trying to get gas on my way home from hockey, and it's not open, but yet it looks like it's open as you're driving by.
Can I say a few things?
Certainly.
Okay, okay, first of all, okay, my name, Mike Bogazian, president of Super Petroleum, my company established in 1996, I've got about 35 stations, I've been in so many town hearings, I have a station at Hingham too, by the way, just let you know, and when I take a station, and I love to be in Milton, one of the reasons I took this station, and I like to, and it means a lot to me to be in Milton, my office on Blaine Street, and as far as taste and class, I go a long way with it, because I'm very picky, and I took a station with existing signs, with existing height, I don't put the new height, I don't put nothing, when I took, I took a station, tried to improve it, and it needs a lot of areas of improving, improvement, the store, the signage, the flowers, the abovides- I knew that without anybody telling me because it's a nice area in Milton, close to Boston, excellent location. And I couldn't do nothing about the existing height, existing signs. All I could do, work what I have with. So what I did, I covered the Milton Gas, put my banner so people use a card, they know they're coming to Super Petroleum. I don't want the rejection, say Milton Gas and I lose my shift. And obviously, when you put that banner, you're gonna see the sign at night, the reflection of the old sign. And the old sign itself, I'd be willing tonight, I don't know if I can get the sign guy to take the banner out, it's not really that bright because already has conditions before, it's only lit around the edges. They never have any sign like that. So I have to live with that condition. Okay? And, and the LED sign, finally today, the factory got back to us and we dimmed it to, they told us dim it at four, we dimmed it, they told us dim it at six, we dimmed it at four. Four means the lower you go, the dimmer, the, the, less, the more dim, because I wanna see it at four. I don't wanna go at six and then I have to call the guy to show me how to, it's gonna be, reflect to the sunlight. So at night, in the summertime, you know, it gets like, what, dark for, what, eight o'clock maybe?
Sure.
In the wintertime, with dim, it's probably at five, four thirty, something like that. So I'd like to give me guys a chance to see what they can do first because I know about design, I know what they need to do. Even the red banner around the building, initially I want to go red, take all the letters. And I said, "What, I need too much red." They make it off-white, look more classy, blend with the building, and I'm putting a material of vinyl, even more money versus aluminum, because aluminum, the sun buckles out. So, give me a chance, see what I can do, because I take it, this, when I do a station is like, uh, I mean, this is my, my nature, this is my work, I take it seriously. I'm not gonna go, I'm not in the business to pump gas, increase the volume, 'cause I am the guy who, I take bigger pride of my image. My image means a lot. That's, 'cause I'm competing with Shell, Haas, everybody. So my image means, that's why I have my own gift cards, hopefully you guys come buy my gift cards one day, you know? And, uh, so, give me a chance, look at the, the brightness of the, the sign and we can work together. I'm not here to, the last thing I wanna do to offend the town, or make my neighbor not happy, I want my neighbor to be a customer. I'm not here to, you know, like I told you, I'm in business since 96 and, and I try to work with people, people work with us, that's what I'm looking for.
Could I just ask a quick question, maybe to Mike? Uh, I, I think, one of the, one of the questions was, when the gas station is closed, will the sign be turned off completely?
Of course, absolutely.
So, and the station closes, what, 10, 11 o'clock?
And, and right now, I'm experiencing it, so the latest is 11 o'clock.
Okay.
In the wintertime, I'm not sure about, I mean, the summertime, I'm not sure about the winter yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, on the way, and, and it will go dark?
Yeah, everything is light, yeah. All you see, the, the lights of the coolers, which is very dim.
Sure, sure. And I, I suppose, within side of the station, you want some security light and stuff like that on.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
But in terms of the sign itself?
Absolutely, everything is off.
Comments?
I live at 300 Granite Avenue.
Your name?
Kathy Ferraro. And this is the sign as it is now, but I'd like to pass these pictures. This is the inside of my house, looking out at the sign. And it's really a very invasive light that comes into the house, it comes into Tim's house, it comes into the boys' house next door and across the street on Wood Street and all that. It's in a very tight, small neighborhood. There are people all around it, on four sides, and the light is very, very bright. And if you're, if you're in the house and that's right, it's, the chief of police said tonight, "It's like having a police car right outside your window."
Yep.
It's, uh, there's no need for that, there's no need for the lights to be that bright. I would take this as an opportunity to, to do a far better sign for the town of Milton. It's, it's an area with opening restaurants coming along and everything else. And these lights are really unwanted in the East Milton area. And I think now would be the time to really put a stop to it and to have some sort of a design that would promote the town and the restaurants and the gas stations and the other business areas. But, but this area is just very invasive.
Can I ask a question? The red that I see here, is that the gas prices?
That's the point. It's right here.
That's the gas prices.
It's right here.
Yeah, so that's not the super that I'm looking at, that's the gas prices.
I believe it's the, yeah.
Okay. Which we're talking about making sure is turned down.
It'd have to be turned down significantly to have it, otherwise it, it's just awful.
Well, I guess we'll find out tonight if the thing works. Because it, the rheostat is put on it and it should be turned down. And again, to, to a level four, whatever that means, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, you know, I'd have to say that, you know, I've been looking at this for a while, um, you know, and I hear the residents' concerns and I, you know, tend to agree with them. Um, you know, I really do. I think that there's an opportunity with, with a lot of change that's occurred in East Milton for the positive, that we do take a stronger look at this and with the planning board, that we reevaluate, you know, what type of signs and how we're gonna work with some of our customers and new business owners, so that we can potentially, over the long term, with the sign by law committee, create some new, new and effective, I think, dialogue, you know, for the long-term benefit of the town. It's just, it's of my opinion.
Just procedurally, I wanna see, is there anyone else who wants to speak? 'Cause I, I know we've got others here.
At least one.
I think we should hear from all of them and then we can have a discussion.
Sure.
Hi, Amy Laney, Crafton Ave., East Milton. I, I did live on Granite Ave. 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and I just wanted to mention, you know, I, I love being near the business. I only looked in East Milton to live, so I'm not anti-business and I'm not anti-signs. I wanted to mention also, when I lived on Granite Ave., we worked with the neighbors to say, "Oh, is there a way to, like, kinda soften the street up?" We got some trees planted, the marks in the middle of the road is, you know, to maybe put a potential island. There was some money, I think some gateway money at some point. You know, we haven't pushed that forward, but there, this is the entrance to our town. I come home from work every single night of the week from Boston, I'm, I'm coming out and I'm excited to be home. When I come through and see bright lit signs, it really feels like it's against the character of the town. And it's not just the gas station, it's Blue Hills Bank and a few other things. So, obviously, you've seen me here before and I'm, I'm interested in this. What I wanted to mention is tonight, I think my request would be that we do the most extreme thing we could possibly at this point. So we should be as stringent to the bylaw in that we are only supposed to be at the selectmen when we are going outside for an exception to the recommendation. So that's the way the bylaw is currently written. The only thing that is supposed to be here is, is when we're going outside it. So we're here because we're outside of the recommendations. So I thought it was really important to just read the purpose of the bylaw, which is to preserve, promote, and advance the aesthetically pleasing environment of the community by prohibiting permanent signs in residential zones except such as are necessary for the public health or public safety. So, um, you know, I don't think this sign is doing that. I think it's a, the, the, there's a few things that it's in conflict with all the recommendations of the, um, sign, you know, design handbook. So, um, I think, I guess my point is, we shouldn't be allowing any, we should be stopping anything that's against the recommendation and anything we're requesting tonight should be, you know, really thought through. So my understanding of the changes, when I look at that property, it's not just the illuminated signs, it's that we have advertisements all across the property and that it sounds like some of that is being limited. When I read the bylaw, you're supposed to have one sign. So I don't really understand, when I pull in there and I see a, a sign on the overhang, or, you know, lettering on the overhang and lettering at four different places in the building, how we got to this point? So whatever we're able to do tonight to sort of scale it back to what we have written down as our expectation, I think is what we should be doing tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Anybody else?
Can I, can I make one change to what Mrs. Laney just said? This is in the business district, this isn't in the residence.
Right.
So there is a little bit of a difference there.
Difference. Although I think within the bylaw it says that it shouldn't.
It's a lit sign.
It shouldn't impact the residents.
It's a lit sign, but they are allowed.
Or adversely impact the residents.
Lit signs are allowed in the business district.
Only at the approval of the selectmen.
Right.
Only at the approval of the selectmen.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a suggestion. What I think we should do is continue this hearing, because I think we need some additional information that we don't currently have.
I, I do think that too. I, I do wanna ask a few more questions, but I agree.
Hey, but can I at least put a proposal on the table? 'Cause I think there are some issues that we need to flesh out. So, by way of background, the reason we're having this hearing is because we had an Article of Town meeting that wanted a moratorium on these types of signs. The agreement that we made, and we had discussions with the planning board about this, was that we'd have a public hearing on this, which we didn't always have a public hearing. We acted on it at a public meeting, but we didn't have a public hearing. So we've gone through the steps of noticing this in the newspaper, having the Chair of the Planning Board join us. We probably going forward want the Sign Review Committee to come into these hearings. I think the question that we need to ask Town Council is, what we've been told by the Planning Director and by the owner is that this sign is the same height and is basically the same sign as what existed previously. However, we have the, let the pricing for the gas being pushed down, we have some additional signage in between. So it may be a grandfathered sign, but it's different than what was there before. And I, I wanna get some guidance on what authority do we have at this stage when we have a sign that, you know, Bill says the sign goes back to the 1950s. I, I think we wanna double check and confirm that that's the case, but I think we wanna look into the grandfathering issue and when the, when a change is being made like this, does the grandfathering still apply or does it not apply? And while we're looking into some of those legal issues, you know, I understand the neighbors' concerns, we've had a lot of complaints about this lit sign and other lit signs on gas stations. I think while we're looking into the grandfathering issue, we could have, we could ask that the Planning Director probably be the one to coordinate it, to meet with the owner, meet with some of the neighbors, maybe it's the Neighborhood Association, see if they can come up with any kind of an agreement on this while we're looking into some of these legal issues. Because the aesthetics, and, and we do wanna, we're in the process of the planning, or I shouldn't say, wait, it's the Planning Board that's looking at some new signed bylaws. So I think, I think we can do multiple things at once here, and I would like to get legal guidance on this question of whether we can do anything, because it's been, we've been told that because it's a grandfathered sign, and it's been approved in the past, that there's really not much that the selectmen can do. I don't know if that's true, that's what we've, that's what we've heard. I wanna find out if that's the case. And if it's not, and, and even if it is, I'd still like the neighborhood and the owner to try to get together and see if there's things that they can do to, to make this a more satisfying result for the people, especially in the immediate area, but also the broader section of town.
I, I had the same question, that was my, my very first, is, is to what extent does pre-existing nonconforming, I, I know it is in zoning, but this isn't really per se, zoning, and to what extent does it, does it apply or not apply? Because clearly, this is the same height sign. It's not the same, it's not the same exact looking sign when Milton Gas first opened, but it basically is the same sign that Milton Gas had before it was purchased. Those same panels were there, I believe.
It's larger square footage, though. And if you look at the, the bylaws opposed to the design regulations, we do have square footage limitation.
Yes.
So by pushing the numbers down and filling in with those two extra panels.
But what I'm saying, though, what I'm saying is, when Milton Gas put their, the LED sign, that's exactly where it was. Before it was, before it was super, Milton Gas had the LED right exactly where you're looking at it right now. And I believe it had those top two panels there, didn't it?
It had the two panels. The first one, when it first went up, it was Esso. Esso changed to Exxon.
No, I'm, I'm talking just Milton, Milton Gas, I, I know all that.
Milton Gas bought it from Exxon, so it went from Exxon to Milton Gas.
But then for a long time, it, the sign didn't change until kind of recently.
When Milton Gas came in, we changed the sign because Exxon, Exxon had it as a lit box. We changed the lit box so that it fit with the rest of the square when Milton Gas came in, so that only the letters showed up. You look at the Shell station, all you see is the, the blocks around it. Milton Gas, we did the same thing. When Milton Fuel came through, we did the same thing. You see the letters that spell out Milton Fuel. You see the same thing down at Dunkin' Donuts and you see the same thing at Citizens Bank.
Bill, when you say "we," you're talking about the Sign Review Committee?
Sign Review Committee.
Okay. But the picture that you just showed us?
That's an old, old picture.
Milton.
That's an old, old picture.
Okay, but what year was it? Do you know when it was taken? Because that doesn't have the same amount of panels, see, that's what Emily's saying, the square footage is increased from that picture. So I think we need to check into that.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is that Milton Gas changed it to basically this before it was sold to Super.
Yes.
So what the sign you're looking at is basically the same sign that was there as Milton Gas, not the same sign that you saw in that picture, and it changed.
But the question is, did the Sign Review Committee approve the extra panels?
I don't know, that I don't.
So we need to look into that, we need to find that out. And that all goes to the grandfathering question. It, it sounds like what's happened here is between Bill and the Sign Review Committee and the owner, they're trying to do something to dim the lights, they're trying to improve it. It's not, it, it's still a sign that's really not, if you look at the issues about character of the town and what their master plan says about it, it's still not really ideally what if we had a brand-new application coming in with a brand-new gas station that hadn't had this sign before. This is probably not what we'd wanna have. We'd probably like to look at other options to see, can we give it more of an historical look? Can we give it a less bright or offensive? Offensive's not the right word, but a less, a sign that's not shining in people's windows, right? So, so I think we should try to come down a few different tracks here, look at the legal, check out the legal questions, see if the owner's willing to meet and talk with the neighbors and with the Planning Director, and see where we, where those, those negotiations might lead.
I'll talk about the sign a little bit. The sign has Super Petroleum on the top, whatever, refacing whatever same conditions like the existing one before they bring. Okay, the other one is SP Mart, that's the name of the store, our convenience store everywhere called SP Mart. That's nothing lit, nothing, just regular sign. And the need that, I have another business run the garage called Auto Repair.
Yep.
Because I like to differentiate the two. That's why I took all the lettering out from everywhere, there's lettering all over the place, like almost 360 degrees lettering. I took, I'm taking them all out and putting it only this one instead, so people know we have a garage. All I'm telling people, we have a garage. I didn't need to show it in the building, I'd like to show it in the sign. It's not lit, aluminum, vinyl, exactly here. The LED sign, I came here, I'm a little bit shocked in this meeting, I came here thinking, I'm talking about the LED, we're talking about the whole station now, not just the LED, the whole business, actually, you know? The LED sign, I went out of my way, called the factory, do whatever possible, I get the guy, say, "I don't care, I wanna go before the hearing, I want you to solve it today before the hearing, cancel that or trip, do whatever." And he called me, was very happy, he said, "I think I get it done." And I thought this is the only issue. Now, talking about the whole business, how to do the business, what you need this, what you need that. If you wanna have something made of wood, say Dunkin' Donuts, this station and the gas business, very transparent person of business, people, they have to see the price to pull in. It's the only business, you don't see Stop &amp; Shop putting how much eggs outside.
Understood.
This, this business is very transparent, completely comparative, people differentiate you. I like to use my image, but people like to look at the price too. Without pricing, basically, I close my station, I mean.
No, I, I think we understand that, and you've got competitors in the square who have signs that you need to show the pricing to traffic from the road. So we understand that. I, I think we'd like to see, it sounds like the Neighborhood Association has, might have some ideas that you might even find agreeable. So I think all we're asking is if you're willing to meet with them and talk with them, there may be some good that can come out of that. And in the meantime, we need to do a little bit of legal research here.
And I, I just wanna say too, I just, I really think it's incumbent upon us as a, as a town to reach out to our residents and to follow up and to have them a part of the process. I think that it's loud and clear that, that people want a say, and they should, they live in that neighborhood, and I think we'd do that with other places. I think we should do it, you know, especially when we have, when we have something new[1705.11] coming in. So, I'd like to see that be a part of the process.
No, I haven't heard any good compliment, but the flowers they bought, but the beverages they added, nothing. All I heard is negative. I wish I heard one thing good, you know?
You told me gas, I was not eating.
So, it's, it's.
I think we also know that you're working very hard.
Yeah, you're working very hard. And this isn't, this isn't, this is more directed towards, I think that, so what I'd like, you know, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'd like Bill to go back and to echo what Katie sang, we'll find out that legal, but also go back and work with some of the neighbors and get some ideas. I think it's part of the process. I think it's always healthy that we have good discussions, and at the end of the day, we come to agreements.
I'm totally, I'm totally in agreement with that, that, you know, if something can be worked out between the neighbors to, you know, that is amenable to both sides, that would be the best of all worlds. To the extent, if it can be great, to the extent it can't be, then it's a decision that we're going to have to, have to make.
But we don't want to, I've driven by there, and it does look like it's an improved location. I think you've done some of these things at the station. We're really only focused, the hearing's only about the sign. The hearing's not about the other aspects.
I'm not even finished with it.
The renovations you're making, but we.
I'm not even finished with it, you know? I still have a long way.
We appreciate all the work you're doing to, to improve it. There have been some improvements there, and it does look nicer.
When I took it, I never knew I have to wait for my inspection for a month. They took no inspection, nothing, because the state is very tough when they change ownership, and they have to approve me, check me out. So, finally, I get approved and without, and basically, I like to show, to be clear, I have a bare shop. I don't need to put letters everywhere. I already took a lot of stickers on the windows, say Jeep, Chrysler, you name it, everything there. Now, I even take the phone number out. I don't need the phone number. I just want to make sure it looks clean, professional. And the only, the hard part, the sign's already here. And I know how much LED signs cost to replace, but I want to go today to see the effect of the dimming. Maybe everybody's happy, maybe not.
Right.
You know?
And I mean, let's face it, LED signs, especially on gas stations, are kind of here to stay. I mean, it, it's technology that you, I mean, the price changes constantly on gas. And it's, you know, to be able to do it remotely as opposed to, you know, trying to get up on ladder and, you know, it's, it's just, it's technology that basically is here today.
You know, I have signs over my knee, heading from top. The suction was winter time, because each one cost $20, the big panel. Came up with my knee, boom. So, technology, you know?
But we know you have to be competitive with the other businesses that's out there.
You're coming in at a time when the town is reviewing.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Actually, it's an opportunity for me to meet everybody, all the neighbors, and bring you guys and get to know you. It's an opportunity.
Could I just ask one more question, just so I understand? The awnings, and I know we're really talking about the sign, but since it was brought up, basically, the red awning that's around the SP Mart is just going to have that one little sign over the door?
Yeah, just says SP Mart, that's it.
That's all it's going to say? The rest of it's just clear red?
Yeah, awning clearly.
And then, over the, over the blue sign that's going to say where the auto repair is, again, just a little sign over that?
Yeah.
Right on the awning? Okay.
And you mentioned the off-white. So, in particular to that, you said you changed to an off-white?
What happened is, late now, about the building.
That's the blue is now going to be off-white?
And has writing all over it.
Sure.
And I said, I changed my mind, I thought the contractor, I need to find me a vinyl material siding. Off-white makes it look even much nicer, blends through the building. I don't need to, you know?
Great.
Okay, so this second picture that I'm looking at right here is what it used to look like? Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Is that, am I correct?
Yes.
That's what it used to look like. That's the old.
The top blue banner.
And the top red banner is what it's going to look like, or does now?
Where the transition services is.
That's what it looks like.
That's what it will look like.
But that's going, that's going off-white.
Okay, as opposed to red, it's going to be off-white?
All the way off-white.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. So, it is considerably toned down then from the signage that used to be on the building? Okay.
So, just to be clear, according to what I read in the bylaw, you're allowed one sign. So, are those additional signs, and have they been approved by the selectmen? Because the way I read it, that's multiple signs on property, and that's not what I see here. And if it is, and has been approved by the selectmen, we need to review it as approved.
I don't have the bylaw with me. Isn't the selectmen just approve lit signs and the other signs are approved by the bylaw, by the sign review committee?
Well, if they're non, if they're nonconforming, I guess regardless, I guess the selectmen would approve a sign, you know, to the extent it doesn't meet the square footage or.
So, what we need.
Same with this, too, underneath. So, understanding, you know, this, this structure existed, the signs are now different. What, we need to be very clear, what's been approved and what hasn't, and what we can comment, help comment on and go through the sign review committee and try to get, get it within the recommendations. So, with the gas, with your point that you have to advertise gas prices, that's true. But is this the best way, and is it lit the best way? I mean, the fact that LED is here doesn't mean it has to be here in a neighborhood that has six houses around it.
So, I think we want the town planner to talk with town council and to also check the record on what has been approved by which board in the past, and make sure we have the complete approval history here so that we.
Right, I agree with that.
Are coming from a set of facts that's, that's true, and that we're not guessing.
Bill, do you know the answer on the, the multiple signs in this one?
Because it's on two different, faces two different streets. I know that's why they had the one sign, and then they let Super go on the top.
In usual circumstances, those two rights may be seen at the same location, so I wouldn't consider that, but that would be a debate.
These did go through sign review. They did meet twice to review it. They did make substantial changes to the original proposal. I'll go back and talk with John.
And I just think we have to be really clear, sign review is not.
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear from the back, so you're going to have to.
I just think we have to be really clear that sign review is not select.
We understand that.
Yeah.
We understand that.
So, that's just a different point.
Okay, then, I would move to continue this hearing. Do you want to give it a date specific at this point?
July 21st.
The next.
I'm not sure we'll have everything ready by the 7th. We've got a holiday coming up.
That's true. Yeah, let's continue July 21st.
So, I'll move that we continue until July 21st.
Seconded.
Okay, most men seconded. Any further discussion?
Oh, we should check with the planning board.
I don't have a vote, but before you completely close it, I'd just like to say a few things to you guys. So, as Katie alluded to earlier, the planning board is looking at the current bylaws for signs, the process. We understand it's with you. We're not trying to change that, but we are trying to give you, as we talked about before, the 21st century tools to deal with 21st century signs. So, as part of that, there's two things that we're doing. We're appointing a committee to do that. And you guys have an appointee on the committee, so you'll need to let us know who that is. And then, the second thing we're doing is on June 29th, which is a Monday, we are having a zoning workshop for the public at Fuller Village, the brushhole site, starting at 7:00 o'clock. The planning board has never done this before. So, we're looking at all of the articles that we're currently thinking up for October, signs included, and we'll be talking about those. We'll be doing some interactive work with members of the public who show up. So, we, of course, invite all of you to attend, and anybody else who's listening, especially if you're concerned about signs, but we're also looking at other items, including condominiums, institutional zoning, accessory dwelling units, a whole host of other things. It's been sent out on the public meeting notices, should be in the calendar, been sent to the town meeting members list. We've sent press releases to the neighbors. So, if you can make it, Monday, June 29th, Fuller Village, 7:00 o'clock, we'd welcome.
I think that's a, that's a Super idea. I saw it. If you could televise it down in Newport that day, I'd love it, but it is my wedding anniversary, too.
We are exploring some ways of getting online comments. We haven't come up with a method by the 27th, we hope to, so that people, because we understand we're, this year, we're doing this over the summer to get to October, which is a little tricky. Next year, we'll be starting a little bit earlier, but we know that not everybody will be around. So, we're looking at ways of doing online comments. If you can't make the meetings, can send us their comments. We're also going to be presenting draft zoning in July, revised draft zoning in August in public meetings, leading up to giving it to the warrant committee and to you, and then having our formal public hearing in September.
That's great.
Emily, you available then on the 21st?
As far as I know, I am.
It's Tuesday night.
So, I'll make a note in my calendar.
And before we take a vote, I just want to ask the owner, we understand that you're investing, I'm sure, quite a bit of money to make some renovations here. I think the neighborhood association, from what I've heard from you say tonight, it sounds like they're willing to be very cooperative and to work with you on this. So, so I think we would just ask that you try to work with them and at least have a meeting and see if there can be any agreement there as to, a way to possibly improve this, and we'll take it from there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's tough when you come in, your first time meeting with the board, you've just opened a business in town and hearing a lot of criticism at the first meeting, but we appreciate the improvement you're making. And I think the neighborhood will be willing to have a good productive dialogue.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, most men seconded. Any further comments? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll call Charis up, and item seven on the agenda is the comment letter on FAA Runway 4L.
Good evening.
Good evening, Charis.
Please, I just, I just want to say, it is an extremely well-written letter.
Thank you.
And all the feedback I've gotten, we've had a bunch of comments and suggestions, but, but they've all been positive comments for the most part. So, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, when do we want to start in this? You want to bring us?
Well, a couple of things to update you on. First of all, the FAA sent their response to the comments that we, or the questions that we asked them after the May 18th meeting today at 3:00 o'clock.
Oh, wow.
So, I have them. I've briefly looked at them, and they referenced some links to other documents. I haven't really delved into them in any detail. So, I would like the opportunity to go through those responses and think about how they may change or, you know, impact what I've drafted so far. It may change some of the spin. There may be additional points that I want to make. And so, I think that I would ask for, you know, a few days to be able to, to do that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I did, after I saw some of the public comments that were circulated around from the airport committee and from the CAC rep, and the one, there is one additional point that I would recommend making in the letter, and it's related, and I think it helps deal with the issue of the number, total number of flights in Milton. The letter is focused on 4L, and that's what the FAA has taken comment on. And so, I was really careful to try to keep the letter very focused. But I think there's a way to link the comments on 4L with the high use of the four runways, in particular, looking at what were established as the PRAS goals, which were the goals for the fair and equitable distribution of use of the runway compared to the actual use of the runway, which indicates, based on Logan data and some analysis that Dr. Christensen has done, that those fours are getting used at a higher level than they should be. And that's contributing to the cumulative impacts and the other impacts that Milton is, is experiencing. So, I think that point, and I just got the data again this afternoon from Dr. Christensen, I think that's another point to make, either as part of, I would recommend either including it as part of item number three, community impacts, and failure to take into account cumulative impacts, or even as its own separate, separate point. So, I would like to make that revision and suggestion as well.
Yeah, I think it kind of says it's, it's not an East Milton problem or West Milton, it's just, it's a Milton problem, basically.
Correct. Exactly.
As a whole, right.
Exactly. Other than that, John Flynn and I sat down today and went through, and we had a couple of really just very basic editorial suggestions, nothing that, that would impact the substance of the letter. And I would also suggest copying Congressman Lynch on the letter and perhaps some of the other local representatives as well. Other than that, that's sort of where I am with the draft at this point, and I'd be happy to hear what you all have to say and what you think else needs to be addressed or needs to be clarified.
Open it up, Deb.
Well, I thought it was very good, but we do have some comments from various members of the airplane noise committee, and I don't know if they've all been sent to Charis or just collected by the airplane.
I know, I know quite a few have, but I'm not sure.
Our committee members are here.
Yeah, we do have some committee members here, and, you know, there's very good input from some of them. So, I'm not sure if you've received all of them, but I think it would be good for you to go through some of it, because I think some of it might provide some additional ammunition, shall we say.
I, there, I did receive some through Ann Marie, so if they were sent to her, they were sent to me. If they weren't sent to her, then I didn't receive them.
Did Andy's comments go over?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep. And I think actually, in particular, those, his comments can be addressed through this idea of talking about the PRAS goals and the overuse of the runways. And specifically, I think that would help address some of his comments in particular.
That's great.
Okay.
We want to.
Roxanne, do you want to, yes, Chair, we talked to.
Well, I'd like to go, Chair, I want to intervene something.
Sure. Come on up. Come on up.
There's a sign. Nice to meet you. Roxanne. So, I'm Roxanne Mostow. I'm a co-chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. So, first of all, the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee would like to commend the selectmen for taking this issue on regarding the possible addition of two additional RNAV flight paths over Milton seriously. As you know, the FAA is proposing two additional RNAVs or highways in the sky over the town. If these are, in fact, implemented, all of Milton will be overrun with planes, and some areas will be flown over most hours of the day and night. Some residents are already experiencing this. Currently, approximately 40% of Logan air traffic overflies the town, and we're a town of approximately 13 square miles. Recently, our committee received the draft letter from the town attorney for the town's response, that's due by June 30th, to the FAA. Our impressions of the response letter is that it was good. However, we would like certain aspects of the letter enhanced. Our committee would like the selectmen to consider saying that they strongly oppose versus strongly object to the implementation of these RNAVs in the letter. This was something that was discussed at our committee meeting, and that was some of the wording that the members had agreed upon. Additionally, the Milton Board of Health will also be drafting and sending along a letter of objection to the FAA and other relative agencies as well. And I'm on the Board of Health, and Caroline Kinsella is also here as the health director. We're concerned with potential health aspects and implications related to this proposal. And as a result of some of the feedback that we've received, we would like to emphasize that we are here for the town of Milton and to represent all of the residents in the town, and work with the Board of Selectmen and Charis to make sure that all of Milton is represented towards goals of ensuring that Milton is treated fairly with us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Okay. Any other comments, or? So, logistically now, how are we going to, because we need a response.
The thing is, there's something that I think we're going to need to kind of get this moving a little bit, too. And we're going to have to meet probably as a committee again as well. I know we're not set for quite some time.
The selectmen won't meet before June 30th again, so.
They let us do by June 30th.
They let us do by June 30th, right.
I believe the Airplane Noise Committee, Mr. Burns, is not meeting until July.
Not until in July, right. Right.
I mean, we could approve it now, subject to the changes. We could read it and just give our approval to Anne Marie and come in and sign it, I guess. I mean, I don't know how to.
I think we could approve it in substance tonight. We've at least all been copied on various changes, and.
Right.
Some of them are duplicative, some of them are similar. So, there was nothing, speaking for myself, there's nothing that I saw in any of those comments that was objectionable.
No, no. I didn't either.
There may be, I think we want to rely on Caris to incorporate a lot of these different ideas or comments into the letter. I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if anyone else here from the committee wanted to speak, or any, or our CAC rep Cindy Christensen's here, it may even be members of the public here, but if anyone else has any input that we haven't seen in a written comment, I think we should hear it so that if we vote tonight to approve it in substance, we've at least heard what the comments are.
Sure. So, I guess if there's any, clearly, you know, anybody that's emailed, I've read it, we've all read it, but yeah, so I guess if there's nobody, if there's anybody out there with other ideas that haven't already been put down on email, then I'd be happy to listen to them, sure. So.
In that way, our vote to approve tonight is based on the full facts, yeah.
Cindy Christensen, I'll keep it short, because Caris has already mentioned it, but I want the public to understand that the reason the 4R is important in this discussion is that the 4L arrivals don't start until the 4R is so congested that the planes can't land safely. So, if they did not overuse the 4R, there would be no need for these 4L RNAVs. So, that's why I think it's important that we not ignore the fact that if they didn't overuse 4R, they wouldn't need these 4Ls. It's only used, and the documents that we have seen claim that this is the only way it will be used, is when there's so much backup 10 miles out from the 4R RNAV that they can't land planes fast enough. And so, that's why they're now asking the western part of Milton to suffer a little bit more, because they can't get enough planes in quickly enough on 4R. So, if they would fix that problem, it would help the problem that they've created for us with the 4Ls.
Yep. I agree.
And I think that falls right into the whole concept of the PRAS goals and the overuse. And Dr. Christensen and I actually talked about that briefly yesterday, and she gave, like I said, she gave me some good data and good information that I can incorporate into the letter.
Great. Anybody else, or? Okay.
So, I'll move that we approve the comment letter from the Board of Selectmen to the FAA as drafted by Town Council in substance, with subject to revisions based on comments received to date.
Okay. I'll second that.
Can you, Mr. Chairman, second any further comments? See, not all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Who would you like me to coordinate with? Well, obviously, I'll send it to all of you.
Yeah, and then Anne Marie will coordinate the whole.
Coordinate with you. Okay. Perfect. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
While we're here, should we mention again, just, I think we had, there was a typo in the address to send comments to the newspaper, so wasn't there, so, does anybody have the address handy? I didn't, I don't have it with me, but just for anybody watching, so that we can put, do you have it, Barbara?
Yes.
So that we can, oh, Caris, do you have it? Oh, it's on the letter.
It's on the letter.
Okay, I'll just read it. So, it's a complicated email address to send to, but it's the number nine dash letters A N E, Apple Nancy Edward dash B O S, Bob Oscar Sam, dash N A V, Nancy Alice Victor, dash 4L, as in Larry, at FAA.gov.
It is a small phone.
It is. So, we'll read it again. It's nine dash A N E dash B O S dash N A V dash 4L at FAA.gov. We have this up on the website.
Yes, we do.
So, for anyone from the public who wants to send comments, you know, they should feel free to do so, and we encourage it. I think the town's comment letter will be very important. But obviously, if anyone from the public wants to send comments, and the Board of Health is going to be sending a letter also. Cindy?
Yeah, I just will say, the town has set up a nice link on their front page, www.townofmilton.org that says "Airplane Noise," so they can get to that address going that way. And the other thing that I'm suggesting that people would like to do is to CC me. My email address is there, too. And this is just a, for record-keeping, and also, I try to respond to the people who have sent things in, thanking them from the town of Milton for making their reviews.
Do you want to give out your email address on TV?
Yeah. It's C L C, those are my initials, CLC Milton at gmail dot com.
Thanks, Cindy. Thank you.
In addition, in addition, Mr. Chairman, we have another CAC rep, Carolyn Kinsella. So, if we could also have residents email Carolyn.
Sure.
Okay.
She's on a different CAC committee, so it's two completely different committees.
The state organized one, yes.
So, please email me, too, at C Kinsella at townofmilton.org. I'd be happy to listen to what you have to say with all the noise pollution, both the noise and the environmental effects that are happening in Milton.
That's C K I N S E L L A.
Yeah, at townofmilton.org.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, in this week's Milton Times.
Come to the microphone, Barbara.
In this week's Milton Times, they're making a correction on the editorial page to the email address to correct it. And we're also asked them that they would keep an article in front of the town, and they're doing another letter to the editor with the correct email address in it this week.
You can also submit written comments to the address that's also in the draft letter. If you don't want to submit them, email, you can submit them by regular mail as well to the New England Executive Park address in Burlington, which is where the FAA Regional Office for New England is located.
Right.
Attention to Alan Goldsher.
They are due by June 30th.
And they are due by June 30th, correct.
And that address is also on our website.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Before we leave this topic, we had, we drafted a letter to Congressman Lynch thanking for his comments on the floor. It's not on our agenda, it's just a thank you note, but it's related to airplane noise, so.
Yes, I did see that letter.
Can we all get it, just, we'll all sign it and get it out to Congressman Lynch to appreciate his efforts.
Okay. Let's see. Item 14, I believe we're on right now, right? Contractors, materials and supplies?
Well.
Well. Oh, yes. Okay. Yep. Okay. Come on up, Joe.
Says discussion of FEMA hazardous mitigation grant application.
Sure. So, subsequent to any nationally declared disaster in the eyes of the presidential declaration, FEMA makes available grant programs both on a non-competitive and a competitive basis. So, subsequent to the January storm, there's a round of grants that have been opened up called a Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant, and second to that, which is non-competitive. And the other two, which are competitive, are a pre-disaster mitigation grant and a flood mitigation assistance grant. Doesn't really matter what the declaration is for. We know winter storm was a winter storm. You could also apply for flooding, though that's not what I'm here for this evening. So, what was clear in this past winter, given the extraordinary amount of snow that we had, and how pressed we were of where we would store some of that snow, and how quickly some of those areas that we've historically used filled up, there's a thought of considering the viability of that hurricane lot I referred to earlier this evening as a viable location. You know, might it be used for such a purpose in extraordinary winters? There was a mitigation grant seminar just a couple of days ago, but there was a conflict that I had to attend a meeting here, and I was unable to do that. But I did speak with our MEMA rep. And FEMA makes the money available, but MEMA, state level, and DCR together administer the programs at the state level. So, I spoke with our rep this morning, and there's one other community in Massachusetts who is in fact looking at using some federal money to explore the viability of creating or enhancing snowfall. They're not certain whether it's eligible or not. The reason why I'm here this evening is that, you know, it takes a heck of an effort to put an application together. We're not certain if it's the competitive type or the non-competitive. If it's non-competitive, it's 25% match. If it's the competitive type, there's only a 5% match, but you're also competing nationwide, not just within our own region.
Right.
But we've received all types of grades in the past, you know, historically over the decades. So, what I'm looking at is that there's absolutely no stomach for considering using that lot, you know, whatsoever. It just simply won't pursue the viability of that. What I don't even know at this point is whether there's money available to just study it, look at the viability, and say what you need to do, and whether there's supplemental money or maybe part of the same to take it to the next level to actually design something, and then whether in fact ultimately there's money to even construct something. What we do know is using that lot up there as it is now shouldn't be done, as opposed to couldn't be done. And it's because we know that as you move that clean white snow into mountains, into any area in the wintertime, it doesn't take too long before it all begins to melt down and consolidate in that beautiful white pile that was there.
It's black.
Day one is black.
Yep.
And full of debris and trash, and the runoff needs to be treated and handled in a certain way and collected. So, you know, it's that sort of thing that I think we might want to consider studying and understanding, whether that is in fact a viable use for the hurricane dump, you know, on those years that you need it. You know, the destruction that was done to, truthfully, the destruction that was done to the community, never mind Kelly Field, never mind the perimeter of the high school field.
Right.
And really, the one that was least accessible but turned out to be the most successful was the Victory Garden Lot, where, you know, through the generosity of the Cunningham Foundation, we were able to use a back corner in there. Now, that one had minimal impact. But nonetheless, you know, as the towns all saw this year, is you need to understand where you put it while you're dealing with it, and then you need to understand how you're treating that water and then cleaning it up afterwards. And I'm looking to tell you that I'd like to pursue that type of grant opportunity. There's two filing deadlines. The non-competitive grant is August 3rd, so you need twice in July prior to that filing deadline. But it's going to take me some effort to ramp up towards that, unless you say no, there's no interest in that. And then the competitive grant deadline is actually in October, so we have much more time on that.
I guess, Mel, and I guess, I asked this this morning, but I'll ask the same question again for the benefit of everybody, is obviously, you already mentioned that when you dump snow, you dump a lot more than just the pretty white stuff, you also dump all the black nasty stuff. And no matter where it is in the town, it creates a problem, and how do you protect the soil? How do you protect, you know, the environment when you do something like that?
Exactly. You'd have to understand the water courses that are there, you have to understand how the water either gets into the ground or not into the ground, and control that during the melt-off period. You need to understand, you know, how it is you would collect the debris and dispose of it at the end, you know, when the time arises. I mean, all those things that we face as it is anyway. But, you know, when you're faced with extraordinary circumstances, I suspect that things like Kelly Field and the high school are not going to be viable sites in the future. I certainly expect that. I'm also hoping that we don't see such a winter as we did. But, you know, that's why they call them pre-disaster mitigation grants, is you're looking at these plans, you know, it's the realm we work in, and the LEPC, NSC, you've got appointments later on. I'm a member of the LEPC. Now, those are the types of things that we look at as we plan, you know, whether it's tornadoes or hurricanes, and it's probably how the hurricane lot came to be to begin with, by the way. So, you know, we're looking at that location.
And what we'll be talking, I mean, I know you haven't planned it out yet, but ballpark in terms of looking, ballpark the size of this grant, if it's going to need either a 5% or 25% match?
We haven't even, trust me, the announcement just came out on June 1st. And, you know, we're, so we're, and I've been trying to reach the, Mr. Woodbury, our contact, and was successful in doing that this morning. One, I'm not even sure it's eligible, and two, if it is, I'm not even sure, do I want to go all the way to the point of committing? I mean, hate to say it, not would, but, you know, the chances are, we're going to get another disaster in the future, so maybe this application takes us up to at least the viability study level, maybe takes us as far as, let's get it to the point of permitting, and then under some future grant, apply for the actual construction of that site.
Okay.
Make the improvement. So, I think we can take it in three different slices.
Okay.
So, one question I would have is, we've occasionally talked about that town-owned property off the access road is a potential location for affordable housing in the town.
Actually.
Is the hurricane lot, is that part of, I guess we need to know, how much acreage is there? What portion is the hurricane lot? Is that something?
There's a lot of pieces up there. There's the park department land up there, there's.
This is not the park department, so there's a clear distinction, and that's a good point, Tom. So, the access road, as it meanders up the hill and straight, eventually becomes Ash Street, and where it becomes Ash Street, which is just beyond Quarry Lane, that's that area beyond Quarry Lane and to the left, which is to the northwest, is parkland, and Ash Street is still a designated street in town, so that's a way, but it's unimproved. So, this would be the area south and west of Quarry, down towards where the dog pound is, so it is in that area that you're talking about. The affordable housing site, I thought also included, you talked about the assisted living site was targeted at private land.
No, well, that assisted living is different, but they're at different times. When we were going through the Housing Protection Plan process, we talked about that area potentially being a location. Now, there is, there's another issue up there, because there's a, we'd have to do some work on a Native American issue as to whether there's artifacts in the area. I think there was some kind of historical action or restriction put on, but I don't know that, I think it's a full restriction, but I think that's.
That's a quarter of a mile to the south. That's on.
Of the hurricane lot?
Right. If you were to go up the access road and take that right, about a quarter of a mile down that road, as you're climbing up the hill and before you start dropping down, the, and it's not even a question, it is definitely a site in there. It's actually very impressive.
But I think, when we were going through, but when we were going through the housing plan, I think it was not clear how strong that restriction was, or whether it was a formal restriction, or whether it was something less formal. There were questions I just had with him, I, you know, we'd have to go back, we'd have to research it.
Sure.
But I know there were questions as to how stringent that is, and whether that's something that could be revisited. But we've talked about the site in general as potentially, I think we designated it in the housing plan as town-owned property that would be considered for affordable housing. So, the question, I think, for us is, since Joe said, we don't, if it's totally off the table for something like a snow lot, would we, he wouldn't even want to consider the grant. So, I think we need to think about that. Maybe we need to go out and either view the property or get the maps and get an idea of how much land there we're talking about, where this is in conjunction with where the animal shelters are looking at, where we might be thinking of for assisted living, affordable housing.
Yes.
I just don't, I know that we have enough information to know whether you could do both, or whether it's one or the other.
I'd like to take a look at the land myself. The land's a little hard to look at, because it really is overgrown.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you can get up there in a little bit. It's not a huge amount of land up there. It's, I mean, it's a few acres, but.
Oh, I think it's approaching eight acres. I don't think it's a few. I think it's a pretty sizable lot.
The question is, how much of it has the Native American issue?
None of it.
None of it. That's over to the right.
Native Americans, a completely different site, a quarter of a mile on the same larger tract of land, but nowhere near this. It's actually even a separate parcel for that.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of it for, I don't mean the hurricane lot being the Native American. I'm thinking for the affordable housing. When we talked about that, we knew there was going to be a potential issue there that we'd have to do historical research on.
There's some missing, I don't know.
So, the question is, if you use the hurricane lot for snow storage, how much acreage is left to consider affordable housing? And I, we don't have the answer to that, obviously, tonight, but.
And I think when we talk about, you know, what the grand application ultimately looks at, when I say the viability, I mean, it's really understanding what limitations and what alternatives are out there, and what restrictions or constrictions might exist. I mean, part of it can be simple, not simple, because nothing's simple up on that tract of land, from what I remember with the turbines.
Ms. Philicham, it might help the board if you were to show maps, and a map that shows where that Indian artifact location is.
If you refer to what we did in the earlier order on number 12, excuse me, number 10 this morning, excuse me, number 11, which was the surplus soil. Someone got the color copy, which is far more clear than black and white copy.
Yeah, I put everything up of Orchard Street and Quarry, say, Park Department on this map, but.
Yeah, but when we were doing the HPP, I think that there was a question as to whether the map was correct or not. This is obviously something we're not going to resolve tonight.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm just bringing this to your attention, just to, if I get feedback that.
But I mean, even the question about the parkland and the maps.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at that, this came in in color, it says here regularly-shaped lot that is designated the hurricane lot, right there, which this piece right down here, up to that corner, is what's set aside for the further exploration by the animal shelter.
So, that's where there is the animal shelter.
Right over here.
In that packet is information, survey information that Phil Clark gave, but I'm not certain if it includes the actual acreage.
Yeah, when you click on that lot, it says Town of Milton Quarry Hill Association.
Well, that's what it was. That was the question that we thought the maps made, the maps online, assessors' maps may.
Made that, right off, right off of Quarry Lane, says it's owned by Town of Milton Quarry Hill.
Right. And I think there was a question as to whether the lease covered that, that I don't know if anyone ever looked into it.
I don't know either.
So, there's another piece of that packet that everybody got as part of the other order.
Unless that was what Quarry Hills gave back to us, because didn't they give back the Ash Street Playground, basically, they were going to build that, and then they decided not to, and just kind of gave it back, right?
The lease line was surveyed in support of the study for the wind turbines, and that lease survey, lease line survey is part of the packet they submitted on item 11. And it is in fact, and I'm being careful to say this, it is in fact the access roadway, it's, so the entire access roadway is on the town-owned property.
Yep.
Though if you go up there and venture up there and take a tour, what you will find is that there are excursions well beyond the lease line by the lease sewer, lease sea, I should say.
So, you're saying everything to the left of, west of the access road.
The entire access road and everything to the left of it.
And everything west of it.
Is Milton land, and everything to the right beyond the access road is what's the lease line. And that's been ser, you know, surveyed, surveyed professionally.
Yeah, and the land we were looking at for the wind turbine was on the other side of Reed Street, wasn't it?
It was much further down. It was down by, you know, the gas...
Close to Chickatawa, really, right?
Closer to Chickatawa, you know, that far down. You know, I said a quarter mile for the first turbine, and an additional quarter mile to the second.
Right.
So, when do we need a decision on this? Is this something we can take under advisement tonight?
That's all I'm going to do, bring your attention, to let you know that I'm not, you know, out there, you know, looking to commit the town. What I'm looking to do is, is get an understanding whether we think it makes sense for me to at least take the next steps, have us continue to have the conversations with the MEMA folks, understand what it is that we might be eligible for, or not eligible for, and then bring it back in July, so we can maybe act in, you know, more detail, more rapidly, in support of an August 3 application submission.
Right. I guess I'm kind of in the, have the same feeling that Katie has, that, you know, the town owns so precious little land, you know, a little bill of land within the town, that it is kind of precious. That, that doesn't mean that using it as a snow dump wouldn't preclude us from using it at a later date. The question becomes, if we're going to make it into a snow dump and spend millions to do it...
You wouldn't want to invest in it only to turn around and sell it.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Right.
So, that's it on that item, just to bring to your attention.
Okay.
The next three are pretty straightforward, but I'll stick around for any questions.
Okay. Just a contract award for sewer system infiltration rehabilitation.
A move that we approve the recommendation of the engineering department to award a contract for year 10 of 10 of the town sewer system infiltration rehabilitation program to Inland Waters Incorporated, the amount of $659,822 to perform work on a contract S-15-1, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Just wanted to note there were three bids in this, and this is the little bid. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 14 is, is a biggie. Contract award for DPW materials and supplies.
When we get the town, strong town administrator article through, this is going to be something that will be in the hands of the town administrator. We don't have to worry about this. I don't think we need to read all of this wordage about, you know, the little bit, it's the little bidder on all of them.
Yes.
So, I was going to propose that we shorten this motion a little bit.
That's fine with me.
All right. I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the engineering department to award contracts for material supply as specified below, and to authorize the town administrator to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board. Cement concrete blocks and precast manholes to MJ Perioli and Sons, Inc. Drain and sewer castings to EJ USA, Inc. Portland cement and concrete mix to MJ Perioli and Sons, Inc. Granted curbing to Williams Stone Company, Inc. Bank gravel awarded to G Lopez Construction and Kingstown Corporation. Crushed bank gravel to LaRusso Corporation. Washed stone to LaRusso Corporation and SM LaRusso and Sons, Inc. Crushed stone, stone dust, and crusher-run and reclaimed pavement borrow material to LaRusso Corporation and J&amp;J Landscaping Supply Company, LLC. Sand to G Lopez Construction, Inc. and Kingstown Company. Loam to JJ Landscape Supply Company, LLC and LaRusso Corporation. Pure pine bark mulch to J&amp;J Landscape Supply Company, LLC. Rental of heavy construction equipment to Paul E. West Crane Service, Inc., Aracco Sewer and Drain Service, Inc., and J&amp;J Landscape Supply Company, LLC. Grass seed type A, B, and C to J&amp;J Landscape Supply Company, LLC. Fertilizer to Central Garden and Pet Company, LLC and J&amp;J Landscape Supply Company, LLC. Traffic line paint and glass spheres to Highway Safety Systems, Inc. And bituminous concrete cold patch and asphalt burn mix to MSUC HMA and TL Edwards, Inc.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Some more names there, Joe.
Next one's not a lot better.
It was, it's not much.
Contract award for DPW waterworks supplies.
Okay. A move that we approve the recommendation of the engineering department to award contracts for waterwork supplies as specified below, and to authorize the town administrator to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board. Ductile iron pipe Ferguson Waterworks, man pipe fitting, repair clamps, water service and gate boxes Ferguson Waterworks, HD Supply Waterworks, tie sales, Styles Company Incorporated, waterline supply, and waterwork supply. Fire hydrants to Ferguson Waterworks, brass goods to HD Supply Waterworks, Styles Company Incorporated and Ferguson Waterworks. PVC sewer pipe, clay to PVC transition couplings to Waterworks, HD Supply Waterworks, Styles Company Incorporated, and Waterwork Supply.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Joe. Item 16 is award of stop-loss insurance for FY 2016.
A move that we award a bid for stop-loss insurance for fiscal year 2016 to Cook &amp; Cook Insurance and Services Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and just for anybody, this is awarding the, the health insurance stop-loss insurance, because we are self-insured, but the stop-loss covers, covers us up over a certain limit. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to say, Mr. Chisholm, that the bid for fiscal year 16 is about $3,000 less than the fiscal year 16 bid was, so, and it's for...
For the stop-loss policy, yeah.
For the stop-loss policy, and it's $40,000 less than the second bidder for fiscal year 16 as well, so we're doing quite well.
Okay. Item 17 is acceptance of Curry College pilot payment.
A move that we accept a supplemental voluntary pilot payment in the amount of $14,048.76 for the fiscal year that began on July 1, 2014, which represents the current real estate tax on the college's acquired property and accompanying lot at 1016 Brush Hill Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and again, just so that everybody understands, this is supplemental, this is not the total Curry pilot payment.
No, the total Curry pilot payment for fiscal year 15 was about $66,000.
So, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we get item 18 is board and committee appointments, conservation commission.
A move that we reappoint Ingrid Beatty and Arthur Doyle to the conservation commission to serve through May of 2018.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments?
Yes, I just would like to acknowledge Craig McNaught for his service to the town over many decades, and to thank him for his service, and to thank all of the members of the conservation commission, and I think they're worth pointing out, because, you know, the conservation commission, unlike other boards, I don't think they get the attention and the credit they deserve sometimes. They don't just come to a meeting and sit at a conference room and make decisions and then leave. Almost every month, they're spending a Saturday morning walking through brush, and sometimes swamps, and, yeah, in order to be on the conservation commission, you have to be willing to take bee stings and, and put yourself out there, sometimes with snakes, with ticks. It's not the most pleasant committee to be serving on in that sense, and I was, I happened to be at their April meeting, and they were all, that was early afternoon, they had been out in the field since 8:00 in the morning, and they were coming in still shaking ticks off when they were getting out of the cars at town hall. So, they've been on television a lot recently, because they've had some big 240B proceedings before them, and there's been a lot of interest in those. They weren't televised before that, not many people really knew what the conservation commission did. And there's some good people on that committee. I've been before them with town administrator on one particular project, and didn't agree with the, a decision that they took, but all of them have good experience for that committee, and I think all of them really deserve our thanks for the hours that they put in, and for their willingness to take on a, a role that's not always easy. You know, it requires being out in the field, it requires walking through areas that aren't the easiest places to walk through always. So, so I, I'm glad we're reappointing Ingrid and Arthur, and I would like to thank them all for their service.
Okay. Any further comments? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, let's see. Item 19 is board and committee appointments, council on aging.
A move that we reappoint Jean Leslie, Carolyn Everett, Barbara Jackson, Louise Viveras, Lorraine Sumner, and Michael Balf to the council on aging committee through 2018 in June, and Natalie Foltz and Deborah Neely on the council on aging committee through June of 2017.
I'll second it with a friendly amendment. I think this, we got a typo in here. It should be the council on aging board of directors.
Yes, supposed to committee, yes.
It's supposed to committee, so with that, you'll accept that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, board and, board and committee appointments, local emergency planning committee.
A move that we reappoint Robert Atkinson, Michael Blanchard, Charles Caputo, Brian Carlyle, William Clark, John Fleming, Margaret Gibbons, John Grant, Chris Grazia Oso, Brian Greeley, Jay Hackett, Paul Hopkins, Carolyn Consella, Brian Lennahan, Joseph Lynch, Bernard J. Lynch III, Michael Lynch, Robert Mallett, Walter McDermott, Cynthia Page, Joseph Prandak, William Ritchie, Mary Ann Sullivan, Richard Wells Jr., Mark Williams, to the local emergency planning committee through June of 2016.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Board and committee appointments, Massport liaison alternate.
A move that we, we reappoint David Godine as the alternate Milton Massport liaison through October of 2016.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 22, board and committee appointment, Max Ullin Rank Lease Committee.
A move that we appoint Claire Keating of 28 Harlan Street to the Max Ullin Lease Committee through May of 2016.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and just a comment by me. Claire Keating is, you know, very qualified to serve in this committee. She's CPA, and, you know, the kind of person that I was looking for to be on the committee, so I welcome Claire, and I welcome her input on that committee. So, any further comments? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 23 is a one-day liquor license for Milton Arts Center.
A move that we approve the application for a one-day liquor license for Milton Arts Center at 334 Edgell Road on Friday, June 26, 2015, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a celebration fundraiser.
Second.
Any motion made and seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 24 is year-end reserve fund transfer authorization and 3% year-end transfers.
A move that we approve and forward to the warrant committee for approval of 3% transfer request from the Milton Public Library in the amount of $12,000 from the salary and wage line to the general expense line to be used for printers and toner, and to address various building related issues.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Follow-on motion?
A move to approve and forward to the warrant committee the approval of a 3% transfer request from the Parks Recreation Department in the amount of $12,866 from the salary and wage line to the general expense line to be used towards their field turf maintenance program and fertilizer application program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 25, designation of chairman to authorize end-of-year reserve fund transfers and authorizations and 3% end-of-year transfers.
A move to authorize Chairman Hurley, on behalf of the board, to approve and forward to the warrant committee for approval all 3% transfers requests, and reserve fund transfer requests that may be submitted after this meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 25, or 26 is Eagle Scout candidate letters of recognition.
A move that we approve and sign letters of recognition for Eagle Scout candidates David G. Buchanan and William X. Zaluzki, that will be presented at the Court of Honor Ceremony on Saturday, June 20, 2015, at 2:30 PM at St. Michael's Church.
We've said it many times over, it's, it's quite an honor to be, to be an Eagle Scout, and I know, David, you're going to be there to...
I'm actually really excited as a former member of Troop Three.
Yeah, you must be.
Yeah, and to be a part of their great celebration and accomplishment.
Yeah. I've read them a couple of times, and it's a lot of fun, those kids.
I'm going to attend it as well. I already sent back my response to Michael Vay.
Oh, great.
So, but I think you should read the letters, because you, you were a member of Troop Three, so it would be very appropriate for you to do the reading of these letters.
Yeah, I'm excited to do so, thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure if we seconded that.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 27 is discussion of town administrators' goals and objectives. Okay, so, did everybody get the, I've got a copy, you know?
I'll take one from you, thank you.
So, I think, how long ago was we, a little, over a year ago?
Year and a half ago, January of 2014.
Right. That we did have a meeting, and we, and we did set forth, or we looked at a bunch of goals and objectives, and kind of narrowed it down to, to up what we believed to be a manageable list, and this is kind of a review of what that list was, and where those things currently stand. So, I don't know if we want to go through them one at a time, or, or just, or if we want to come in on specific ones here?
I think we should go through them one by one.
That's fine.
We don't have to spend a lot of time on each one, but I think we should hit them all.
Okay. So, the first one was, fully prepare the selectmen for all meeting agendas, items that are outside the ordinary course of business. Fully research and make sure that they are not prematurely on the agenda for larger agreements and documents. Make sure the board has executive summaries, and the key parts of the documents are highlighted. And I guess this one, I mean, we probably haven't been fully successful in doing this, I don't think, but, you know, in all deference, there was, you know, tremendously short-staffed through most of last year.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to thank the board of selectmen, department heads, the warrant committee, and other boards and committees for their cooperation, assistance, and guidance that I've received as your town administrator. And you're absolutely correct, the goal for the selectmen's agenda, I believe, has been met broadly, but due to staffing issues in our office, we have been able to incorporate all the changes that I would like to see happen. We do have a new secretary to the board of selectmen, and she and I will be working this year to get your agendas more in line with executive summaries, and all of the backup paperwork, so that you will be fully informed of every agenda item.
I think part of the problem, too, is, is just that the sheer number of items we have on agendas make it, well, extremely difficult to manage from an administrative point here. I mean, to, to collect, collect all that stuff together, get it organized, and, and try and do it in a, in a relatively short period of time. There's so many of those things that are time-sensitive, that, you know, we always feel like we get them at the last minute, you know, and even, even over the weekend, sometimes it gets tough to...
Sometimes that can't be avoided. I think this one came up as an, as a, as a goal, because we had a couple of instances where, and it wasn't the town administrator's fault, it was, a department head submitting some information, didn't give some backup information. We were just wanting the town administrator to vet some of this stuff, and if it looks like things are missing, just to make sure that the chase is on to get the paperwork tracked down.
And it has been helped changing the meetings to Tuesday, and having the agenda And it has been helped changing the meetings to Tuesday and having the agenda over the weekend.
I agree.
But still, you know, some of those longer documents and the ability to have, I don't want to read through a thirty-page technical DPW, you know, that, you know, you've got to read it fifteen times to half-understand what it's talking about, you know, just tell me in plain English what you're talking about, and, you know, I think I'm better served. You know, if I want to delve deeper, then I'll delve deeper, but, you know, that's the thing we're still not getting, and some of the things do get very technical and could use that.
I think Joe Lynch is pretty good, when he comes in here, he usually is sort of presenting it, or writing a memo explaining it, so...
Yeah, right.
So, I think we've made some good progress on this one.
We have, but...
Do we want to have the town administrator just go through them and summarize kind of briefly what she's done for each of these, would that make it easier?
Sure, yeah, I can read the, and then, yeah, you can, so, item two is complete five-year financial forecast and present financial forecast at a public meeting, that was the second one, so...
Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, I felt I had a lot of influence this past year in the fiscal sixteen budget, compiling of the fiscal sixteen budget, I worked with the Chair of the Warrant Committee on many occasions to balance the budget, I developed the town-side numbers for the fiscal sixteen budget and presented them to the Warrant Committee and they accepted them in their entirety, and I did that trying to make sure that every department had enough so that the shortfall, they were able to absorb the shortfall in their department for fiscal year sixteen. As you know, the five-year financial forecast was also part of that charge, that was started and it was completed in October of two thousand and fourteen, and a PowerPoint presentation was created, and it was ready for your presentation, and the presentation was delayed at the request of the school committee because they wanted to look at their numbers and revise their numbers for the five years. Then we get into the fiscal sixteen budget process, we were deep in that process, and so that five-year financial forecast was delayed. We are now compiling the five-year financial forecasts from all the department heads, we should have that completed the end of July, early August, and that will start the ball for the fiscal seventeen budget and the discussions for the fiscal seventeen budget, and hopefully we'll have that presentation ready for you in August, which will then start the fiscal seventeen budget around September with the contingent, non-contingent budgets.
Okay, and we will get, we'll add another year to that, so...
Yes, it'll be two thousand and twenty-one.
Right.
We'll have the sixteen numbers, the appropriations added in.
Okay, have we got a date for when we're going to reform that committee to start that, or...
The five-year financial, we're going to meet with the department heads on July fifteenth, and we're going to roll out the template to them to have them complete it in a date certain, and then at that time, when we get all of them back, then we'll reconstitute the committee of Town Accountant and myself and the Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs.
Good, okay.
I view this one as really substantially completed, I mean, unfortunately, the presentation of the... We hit a snafu with the school committee, well, in hindsight, what we should have done is just gone ahead and had the presentation at our meeting and just let the school committee vet their own numbers out, but, so, you know, that's a learning experience, but it was done, it was just not publicly presented.
Absolutely, I agree.
Right.
I agree, and it's something that never has an end because you're always going to be rolling one more...
You always have to revise it.
One more year and fine-tune them.
Exactly.
In the early years.
It's because that, the town, the selectmen's page on the website has a little click-on for the town administrator's financial forecast, but it's David Colton's from two thousand and six, so I think we need to update, we need to get that off the website and update our, and put our new one up there once we have it, once we have it.
Number three is work with Department of Public Works Director to devise a plan to fund infrastructure maintenance shortfalls.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this one was kind of tough for the Director of Public Works and I to try to develop a plan for, because as you know, we're always getting less dollars and charged with doing more with less dollars, but what we decided was that we will submit with his capital plan every year, a dollar amount to fund the shortfall for infrastructure maintenance, in addition to that, we will continue to lobby for more Chapter Ninety money, we'll continue to look for grants, mass work grants, and the MWR, low-interest loans or no-interest loans.
Well, the NWR, that I don't think will do much for, well, do the water and sewer infrastructure.
No, it's just the, yeah.
Yeah, the water, I mean, the infrastructure, I think we're doing okay in our water and sewer infrastructure, keeping up, where we're not keeping up is our road and bridge infrastructure.
And that's where we will put the money in on that five-year capital.
What I was kind of looking at there was, again, I mean, I tried thinking out of the box as many different ways as I could, but that's really what I want to see, I mean, you can submit it, you could submit it to the capital committee, the cows come home, there just isn't enough money, so we need something outside-the-box thinking, some forward-thinking, not the same old thinking, and that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, but Tommy, I think your Article Thirty-seven at town meeting was a good example of that.
Yes.
And that's, you know, that's not roads, but that was big capital projects that would potentially be funded through that source, so, you know, you drove it, but there was some out-of-the-box thinking on that, the roads, you know, really, I was talking to the town administrator on these goals earlier, and this one is almost an impossible goal, I think, to meet because what you really need for roads is an override to do capital projects.
It may be, maybe that's the answer, but, you know, if that's the answer, then let's start thinking towards that, but...
Well, but, but we're looking...
All I know is we cannot let...
Looking at an operating override, actually, we just had the...
We cannot let our roads deteriorate to the point that they are right now, they're atrocious.
No, we agree with you on that, Tom, but you're, you know, when you're looking at an operating override next year, we just had the firefighter medical override, there's a limit on the number of overrides that can be done, so...
Understand, understand, and there's a limit on how much debt we can issue under the levy limit.
So, I think this one going forward, you're really talking about an override for roads or you are talking about grants, I mean, I don't, what other outside-the-box thinking, aside from what you came up with for some big capital items like buildings, can really be done for this?
You've got to look at grants, but grants take time to write as well.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it takes away from running a department.
And there probably aren't a lot of grants out there, to be perfectly honest, but it's certainly worth pursuing, it's, you know, and again, alternative methods of financing, I mean, I had one idea, it got shot down because, and that was to kind of leverage the Chapter Ninety money that we're getting, so we get, you know, in good years, we were getting nine hundred grand in Chapter Ninety, you know, and, so, to basically do a bond issue and use the Chapter Ninety money to help us maintain the debt service, but at least then you get caught up, it's that kind of thinking, you know, that, let's, there's got to be, there's got to be ways to think out there that are just a little unconventional that might work, but if you don't throw the ideas out...
I agree.
Then we're never going to, you know, so, that's what I'm looking for.
I agree, but you just have to, you have to remember that in the private world and municipal world, it's a little different.
Understand, understand, you've got to throw a hundred ideas, that ninety-nine are going to be shot down because you can't do it.
Yeah, I thought your Chapter Ninety was an excellent thinking outside-the-box try, but as you know, we weren't able to be successful with that because we can't rebond bonded money.
But this one is one that the town administrator has on her list of potential twenty-sixteen goals and objectives, and I think we ought to really consider whether that should be on there or not, because I really think it's, there are probably things that are more important than that, as important as roads is, you know, we know that the way to do it is by borrowing if you want to do more than what Chapter Ninety allows every year, but I think going forward, we should talk about whether it should be on the list going forward or not, and we probably want the twenty-sixteen goals and objectives to wait until we've decided what the board's goals and objectives are at the July meeting.
Yes, yeah, I agree, I mean, I think it is still extremely important, it's what the public sees when they enter this town, it's...
Oh, yeah, the road, there's no question roads are important, but I'm not sure that town administrator's goals and objectives should be to devise a plan to fund the shortfall. We can talk about it going forward, I'm just, I think it's going to be a hard one to meet.
Number five is report monthly, report monthly on status of open projects.
I think we run number four.
Okay. Establish a system to ensure that executed documents and agreements that require action or other kinds of maintenance be kept current, and I know this is now moving forward in a very positive way.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think this goal was met and it actually exceeded what we were trying to do with that reorganization, that multi-departmental reorganization and the creation of the contract and licensing position in the selectmen's office, we will now have an electronic tracking system for the contracts, the leases, the permits, and monitor those for compliance, so I think that this goal is one that was successful.
Yes, I agree. Number five is report on monthly, report monthly on status of open projects, Town Council to present quarterly litigation reports.
I also think that this goal was met in collaboration with the Assistant Town Planner. He and I developed a template of the planning projects, and you now receive those planning projects on a weekly basis, updating the status on those, and I'm working with the contract and licensing agent in your department to put your Board of Selectmen projects in the same type of a template form that you will receive monthly. Also, talked with Town Council, who, as you know, is attending your meeting tonight on litigation update, and he will be moving forward, coming to your meetings quarterly on litigation updates.
That's great.
Good. Good. Okay, number six is advocate for funding of the Assistant Town Planner position.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another goal that was met in January of two thousand and fourteen, I met with the Personnel Board to advocate for the creation of the position, I met with the Warrant Committee, January two thousand and fourteen, to campaign for the funding for the position, the May two thousand and fourteen town meeting approved the position, and in December two thousand and fourteen, we hired the Assistant Town Planner.
And as skeptical as I was that we could get somebody actually for that price, we got somebody that exceeded our expectations.
Met your goal.
Tim's doing a great job.
Yes.
Item eight is develop and oversee training programs for town employees.
Number seven, Mr. Chairman.
Number seven, oh, I'm sorry, implement auditor's, implement auditor's management letter recommendations in conjunction with the town treasurer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I met with your town treasurer, who is an elected official, as you know, he does not fall under the town administrator's jurisdiction, but I did meet with him to discuss the auditor's two thousand and fourteen management letter and the recommendations and the comments that resulted from that management letter, there were thirteen comments, eight of them related to your treasurer's department, I met with the town treasurer and he was tasked with implementing procedures to correct those comments and recommendations on those eight comments. To date, three of the recommendations have been rectified of the five remaining, two of them involve the schools, so your town treasurer's working with the Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs on those, one of the other recommendations is now going to, one of the other functions is now going to, as a result of that reorganization of the selectmen and the treasurer's office, going to happen up now in the selectmen's office, and I'll be working with your Assistant Town Administrator to implement a policy and procedure for those outstanding liabilities, and the treasurer now is still working on the remaining two.
And on a go-forward basis, this will really now fall on the newly authorized, but probably not formed yet, Audit Committee, so while I think the town administrator still wants to be mindful of what the problems are, the implementation and everything really should be with that committee on a go-forward basis.
And the fact that the treasurer is elected and is not part of the selectmen's jurisdiction is a big issue here, so...
Right, makes a very difference, yes, exactly.
But I do think that this goal was also met.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Okay, item eight is develop and oversee training programs for town employees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this goal was not, due to staffing issues, the Assistant Town Administrator and I did not have the time to devote to this, we did have some training of your DPW staff, and, but we are committed to, in fiscal sixteen, working on this goal because we do think it's important, our department head meetings going forward to have training for department heads and then also for middle management and lower-ranked employees.
Yeah, and this was kind of a multifaceted one.
That's right.
Some of it was training of, you know, just computer literacy for clerical positions, as well as, yeah, I mean, just overall bringing in all positions.
Some of it was things, though, like conflict of interest training for all employees, just to make sure everybody's refreshed on that, up to date on it and keeping it in mind.
Yep. Let's see, item nine is work with school committee and school administration toward an MOA to consolidate town and school administrative and accounting functions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, I sit on the Town School Consolidation Committee, and we were tasked with finding some, to explore opportunities for efficiencies on both the town and the school side, we had numerous meetings, and as a result of doing our due diligence, we realized that our first goal should really be the software for the town, because the current software that we have has a short shelf life, between three and five years, closer to three years, so we felt that that was really the first goal, so I'm happy to report that town meeting did improve the new software, which we'll start to implement in the new fiscal year, and I have that as a potential talking point for goals for fiscal sixteen to work on the implementation of that software. The next two areas that we concentrated on were efficiencies with respect to how employees were paid, and so I was successful in negotiating with the seven unions on your side of the House, going forward, effective January of two thousand and sixteen, we will be moving to a bi-weekly payroll and a paperless payroll, which will have significant savings on time, which will allow departments and employees in those departments to concentrate on other tasks and duties.
Yep, so, actually, even though there, some of it's a little low-hanging fruit, they're really good, I mean, you know, I think it was really good consolidation effort, and it really, it really is going to help from a fiscal standpoint, that committee is still together.
We're still together, and we're, our next subject that we're looking at is the procurement officer, so...
Oh, good.
That's our next charge to start to delve into and...
And I keep saying it, it's not so much the procurement officer, I think, as it is the procurement function, that's the important part, I mean, you can name anybody as an officer, we want to know the function is consolidated and works properly, so...
With this new software, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
With the new software package that we'll be implementing, we are hoping the town treasurer and I to implement the PO system on the town side, which will also help with the purchasing.
I'd like to say, I've used that software, Softrite, I used that in the town of Westwood, it's very effective, I think you'll find it to be easily used by a lot of employees.
User-friendly.
User-friendly, and I think that it'll definitely lend efficiencies, which I think we're all looking to get to, and so, obviously, you mentioned going toward the procurement officer, which I think is great, and I'd like at some point in time, you know, if you guys could bring it up, to look at, you know, a consolidation of an HR director as well.
We did try that, we had a short window where there was none at the school level because that person had retired or...
He left for a different position, a different town.
And the schools filled the position before we did anything, so...
We did have a short window.
But it's still, it's, we're all in agreement with that, though.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have our first kickoff meeting tomorrow with the team, with Softrite, they're coming in and we're going to meet with them and go over some preliminary outlines of how we want to move forward and target a date calendar.
It's going to be great to have it all under one umbrella.
Yes, and I'm excited.
I feel excited to be very seamless, I think everybody will get the hang of it pretty quickly, it's very effective.
And they have a really nice budgeting module...
They do.
...that I'm really excited to use going forward, so, yeah.
The consolidation committee has been a success, I think, overall.
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
I definitely agree with that. Okay, item ten, is it, yeah, begin negotiations with unions to increase employee contributions to healthcare plans, review plan design in light of impending Obamacare changes to ensure that premiums will continue to be stable.
And as you know, Mr. Chairman, this was actually, was not achieved because we used the healthcare MOAs with the design plan change to negotiate the paperless and bi-weekly paycheck through December of two thousand and sixteen, so this is a goal that going forward, we really do need to...
And in deference to you and the consolidation committee, really going through sixteen was not a big give-up because contractually, it was already bargained away...
Exactly.
...to a degree by the school contract, so, and we could not, because we'd, without having school buy-in, there wouldn't be enough.
Yeah, exactly, but realizing this goal and trying to do something to accomplish a part of this goal, the town accountant and I did take a look, a brand-new look at your health insurance budget, and we changed the whole way that we compiled that budget, and we did it from an actual census approach, as opposed to just increasing numbers going forward.
Right.
And I believe fiscal budget was level with, your fiscal fifteen budget was level with your fifteen fourteen actual, so we were able to maintain the savings there by reformatting that budget.
Yep.
And those are the ten goals, and then, just for talking points, I did give you some ideas, but I do agree with Ms. Conlon that you probably...
Yeah, those are the things we'll take under, certainly take under advisement, we have our discussion in a few weeks.
Yep, I especially like the DPW reorg and the preparation for weather emergencies and communication, I think, might even expand that out to the local emergency planning committee as a broader group, but I do think that's a good one, but...
I also think that, you know, creating a community outreach plan, you know, kind of a clearinghouse of information that we have as a town, as opposed to social media itself, which I think things can be erroneously reported or taken out of context, I think that if we could create some sort of plan where, you know, working with IT and department heads to funnel information, appropriate information out to people so that they have... that they have information at their fingertips by email, which they can choose to delete if they want, you know? But I think that obviously a lot of these suggestions are really good, and I'm looking forward to having conversations as a whole here.
Yep, I agree, and hang on to that thought, because it's a good one. Get there in a couple of weeks.
Well, especially as we go forward with the new model of a strong town administrator, the board becoming more of a policy board.
Right, then there's more.
So our goals and objectives that we come up with.
Become policies.
Right, and will at least drive more the town administrator's goals and objectives and.
Yes.
Or might be, might tie them more closely together than what we did a year and a half ago.
Right, I agree. Okay.
Thank you to the Town Administrator. I think substantial progress was made on all of those goals, and some of them were fully completed and.
Thank you for your leadership.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 28, Town Administrator's Report.
The only thing that I would like to report, Mr. Chairman, is the We Are Milton Music Festival on June 27th and 28th at Hutchison Field. I want to make sure that everybody does attend that. It is a great family, community-oriented weekend.
Definitely. They got a, they got a great music.
Venue, yes.
Venue set up and with some actual name, people, going to be performing. Should be great.
And the other item is the Zip Trip on Friday, June 26th, with Fox 25 News. We hope to tomorrow have a itinerary sent to us and.
They still haven't decided location.
They have not decided that we know of. I'm hoping tomorrow, when we get the phone call, when the.
Okay.
Good.
Chair's Report. I don't think I really have anything to report at this point.
Did you put on the Curry meeting last night?
Could, yeah, I mean, there was a meeting with Curry last night, which we all attended, actually, and it was a very positive meeting, and they've done a really good job, I think, on the dorm and, is it 1016, Brian?
1016.
You know, that estate there and the plans that they have for us sound great. The abutters and the residents in that area seem to be overall happy with what's been done, had some reasonable suggestions for, you know, things that might want to be changed, and Curry seemed to be receptive
They're receptive, yes.
To all those changes, so I think it was a very good meeting.
Yes.
Right.
Members' Report.
I have one thing to report. I just want to commend a couple residents, John Shea and Brian Hagerty, for their leadership in creating the Milton Youth Street Hockey League.
Oh, really?
On the sports, where they had over 200 kids involved, and it culminated with the championships on Saturday over at Cunningham Park. And so these are residents who have, you know, decided to take action and keep kids busy
Yep.
On a positive note, and the crowds are amazing, and the kids have so much fun. So it's just great to see, a little bit near and dear to my heart, where my dad had created the program in the 70s, and as I was told, that most of the mothers in town loved them because they could drop their kid off and go shopping for three hours. So John and Brian have now taken this over, and I think that they were wowed by the amount of people that wanted to participate, and the kids, and I see this growing and growing. I think it's a great thing. I think that, I think we'll see more and more of this, and it's, it's nice to have that community involvement.
Yeah, it's, yeah, street hockey's a real fun sport.
It really is, and it's very inclusive.
Yep, it is.
The only thing that I would add is tomorrow night is the final public hearing on the Randall Fav 40B, so we'll be at the Zornian Board of Appeals meeting for that tomorrow evening at Carol Blute Conference Room, is it, I think?
Yes.
It's not at the Council on Agents.
Yes.
The Blute Room, at 7:00.
Citizen Speaker Responses.
I have one item to report on. Last meeting, we had Mr. Krang from Elliott Street who came in, raised concerns about a traffic commission meeting, and he raised really a due process concern that the meeting was held and he hadn't been notified about that, so we said we would look into it. What we found out was that the, there really, that wasn't the problem. The discussion of his issue came up in the context of a different matter. Central Avenue project was on the traffic commission's meeting that night. The DPW folks brought up Mr. Krang's situation because he had talked to them about a curb cut, so there was, the good news is there was no due process issue where his matter was scheduled and he wasn't told about it.
It was not scheduled to be.
The bad news is he was supposed to have been on that agenda and his matter wasn't, but that's been rectified. We had a special meeting of the Traffic Commission this afternoon, and Mr. Krang was present with the full Traffic Commission, and the Town Administrator and I attended it, and we, it was a productive meeting, there's more follow-up to be done, but we had a good discussion, so we're making some progress on, on that, and there'll be more to come at a future date after the Traffic Commission does a little more follow-up.
Okay, good, good. Okay, future agenda items?
I think we need to put a budget discussion on the agenda soon, and I don't know how you're planning on handling that, Mr. Chairman, this year, whether you, I know the school committee chairman is very focused on the budget already in the summer, and
Yes.
He happened to mention that to me at a conversation the other day, and we should probably, even though it's summer and it's early, we should probably have that on an agenda, not too long from now.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, we're already, you know, the Town Administrator is already going to start with a department head meeting that's going to focus on budget. We are going to be pulling together the, the team, not just for the financial forecast, but also for
Fiscal 17.
For the fiscal 17 budget, to get out in front of it, you know, and present something to the Warrant Committee early with both contingent, non-contingent numbers in them, so, but yeah, I agree, we should put that on a, you know, put that on an agenda. I don't know if, I don't know if it's ready for prime time in July or not, you know, if we have anything to really discuss at that point, but.
Maybe it's just that, what the procedure's going to be, what the process.
We could certainly talk the process, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to recess the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, to convene a meeting of the trustees of Governor's Stoughton Fund, and to re-enter open session of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of entering executive session.
Second that motion.
Okay, so the meeting of the Governor's Stoughton Trust Fund is convened, so the first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for, let's see, July, June 6th, 2013, June 10th, 2014, August 12th, 2014, September 23rd, 2014.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, Emily, they're not attached here, but I know they were emailed to us.
No, they went on to separate, yeah.
There were some changes on the June 6th, 2013 minutes, those were made, okay, I, so.
Okay, November 12th, 2014, November 19th, and December 18th, 2014, so. Motion for any of those, or did?
I haven't seen the revised June 6th, but I'm sure Emily made the changes. There were some incorrect names on there, and they, I was recused on that because it related to the hospital, so I just wanted to make sure that that got noted in the minutes. But if that change has been made, then that's fine. So I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Fund from June 6th, 2013, June 10th, 2014, August 12th, 2014, September 23rd, 2014, October 7th, 2014, November 12th, 2014, November 19th, 2014, and December 18th, 2014, as written, as amended, actually, I should say.
And, yes, some of those you weren't here for.
I cannot second that.
Yes, I'll second that motion. Okay, so motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and are you recusing all of those, David?
I am.
Yeah, okay. So one recusal. Okay, item two is Polte Due Diligence Period Extension Letter, and this is to extend through July 21st, the due diligence period.
I'll move that we approve an extension of the due diligence period for Polte Homes of New England LLC through July 21st, 2015.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, and just for clarity, this is, this extension is really to give us enough time to really reach out to the neighbors and, in terms of a tree-planting plan and other plans that Polte has come forward to us with to try and get some, see where the neighbors stand on the ideas. So motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's see. See, item three is I'm going to propose a motion to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange, taking lease or value of real property, believing that having such discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the governmental body, and to reconvene in open session for purposes of adjourning.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Hurley, yes.